21, closed session meeting to order of the City of Fullerton City Council. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Turn my microphone on. Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara, this is a good time to test your audio.
I skipped the information on how people may participate if you want to do a short stand on that.
Correct. Councilmember, we did hear your audio, so thank you for that. And let me grab my other sheet. Let's see, we are still under the mayor's executive order through the end of this month, which means that council and the public can access this meeting via teleconference. The public can access the meeting at fullerton.legistar.com or on our cable channels. We do have seating available in the chambers for those who'd like to attend in person. And again, please observe all social distancing protocols that are in place at the time. Those who want to join the meeting via Zoom can do so by going to zoom.us/join or by calling 1-669-900-9128. And for both of those options, the Zoom meeting ID number is 978-421-91797.
Thank you for that. We will now request a public comment on any closed session items only. And seeing no one in the chamber currently, do we have any Zoom callers?
No one on Zoom.
No?
So no one on Zoom.
We do have five items in closed session. So with that, there were no announcements for closed session either?
No.
Okay. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session. I call the September 21st, 2021 regular meeting of the City of Fullerton City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please inform those at home and also in our chambers how they may participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. We are still under Governor Newsom's emergency, sorry, executive order that allows legislative bodies to hold teleconference meetings virtually for council members and the public. The public can access the meeting at fullerton.legistar.com or on our cable TV channels. The chamber also has seating available for the public. And for those who would like to join the meeting via Zoom, you can go to zoom.us/join or call 1-669-900-9128. And the Zoom meeting ID number is 978-421-91797. And all of that information is on the agenda posted online as well as further instructions as far as how to participate.
Thank you. And now would you please call the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
President.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And we're pleased this evening to have John Schaefer of the EV Free Church to provide the invocation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the audience. As I was looking for what would be an appropriate invocation, I found out that in September of 1774, this invocation was given at the first U.S. Congress. So I thought it'd be appropriate to share here tonight. "Plead my cause, O Lord, with them that strive with me. Fight against them that fight against me. Take hold of the buckler or sword and shield and rise up for my help. Be thou present, O Lord, O God of wisdom, and direct the council of this honorable assembly. Enable them to settle all things on the best and surest foundation, that order, harmony, and peace may be effectually restored, and that truth, justice, religion, and piety prevail and flourish among the people. Preserve the health of their bodies and the vigor of their minds. Shower down on them and those here that they represent such a temporal blessing. Blessing as those seest expedient for them in this world, and crown them with an everlasting glory in this world and the world to come. All of this we ask in the name and through the merits of Jesus Christ, thy Son and our Savior. Amen."
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
There's no report this evening.
Oh, I'm skipping past the pledge of allegiance, which I've asked Councilmember Jung to lead us in. If you would all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, our own.
Time for declaration of ex parte communications by council members. Is there anything to declare this evening? Yes, Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, I had a conversation with the OCA member.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
I had conversations with the police and fire union.
Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation with Dan Lancaster of the Fulton Firefighters Association.
Okay, the volume was a little low there. Have we made an adjustment? Okay, great.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I also had a conversation with Mr. Dan Lancaster. I forgot.
Okay. Oh, then maybe I should declare, Mr. Dan Lancaster did send me a text last night. Not really a meeting or a discussion, but I will declare that. With this agenda, it has a number of moving parts this evening, and I'm wondering who can most confidently explain a couple of these changes.
Would you like me to take a stab at it, Mayor?
Yes, would you take a stab at it, Madam Clerk?
I've got to move this wire so I can see my mic is on. We had suggested taking item 10 now on the agenda because the staff is requesting to continue that item. So if you'd like to do that now, and then anybody who is here, and not just here to enjoy today's air conditioning, can go home and go about their evening. Item 10 is the automatic aid agreement.
Right. With no objection, we could do that at this time.
I, Mr. Mayor, I was under the impression that we were going to continue that.
We are. This is with the understanding, right.
So you have public comment. That public comment will be not be to the merits of the item, but to the merits or discussion regarding the continuance itself.
Okay. All right. So with that, we could take public comment on that item at this time? If there's anyone wishing to address the council? Yes.
And this would be just on the topic of continuing this item?
Only discuss continuing.
Right. Only on the continuance?
To talk about it tonight, correct?
No, the fact that we will continue for talking about the merits of it. Okay, thank you. Anyone Zooming on this?
I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the reason for continuation, please?
Because there is additional information which will probably transpire in the City of Placentia tonight. They're receiving a long-awaited report, and we would like the advantage of being able to review what those findings were.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that...
I'll move to continue the item.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Seconded. Would you conduct a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
And passes four to one.
Okay. We have two presentations this evening. The first is for fire personnel distinguished service awards. And I'd like to invite Chief Adam Loser to make the presentation, present certificates. I'd be happy to accompany you on that if you wish.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. How's this? Good? My name's Adam Loser. I'm the fire chief for the City of Fullerton Fire Department. Tonight, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible work of our Fullerton firefighters and how their swift actions on June 13th, 2021, made the difference in a Fullerton resident's life. Firefighters are not ones for recognition or the limelight, so this presentation will make them uncomfortable. They are dedicated group of type A personalities whose primary mission is to make a positive impact on whomever they come in contact with and for whatever the emergency may be. By expressing our gratitude as a city and my appreciation as the leader of this department, we reinforce the ideal that public service, public safety, cannot be accomplished without the dedication of its employees. I'm extremely proud of the hard work that the men and women of the Fullerton Fire Department perform on a daily basis, and I'm excited to share an example of that hard work with you tonight. Deputy Chief Brandon Cote will now come up and provide a brief overview of the situation our crews responded to.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm extremely humbled and honored to be here this evening to recognize our group of firefighters for their quick actions and courageous actions that resulted in the, to echo the chief's sentiments, that saved the life of a victim that was trapped in a structured fire. So with that, we'll go through, I'd like to give just a brief summary of the incident, and then I'll actually get into the details that will really show how timely their actions occurred and what resulted in the successful rescue. So if you can go ahead and, first one. So this incident occurred on June 13th. The alarm came in at 3:15 in the morning. En route to the incident, our units responding were receiving reports of a victim that was trapped. Upon arrival, the first engine that pulled up on scene, in fact, had seen smoke and fire from an upstairs window, and went into quick action, putting companies that were to attack the fire and search the residence while suppressing the fire. Go ahead. As customary on our incidents, the first in company officer while doing his, what we call the 360-degree survey, found a victim that was on the balcony of the second floor, who had been cut off from escape down the stairwell inside the structure, which we were able to immediately summon an additional crew that was arriving on scene to get a ladder placed in that, to that balcony, and successfully get that victim down, and then transport the patient to the hospital. So now I'm going to get into the incident, the details that show just how quickly our units responded and went into action. So the first unit to arrive on scene was Fullerton Engine 1. And now the time that you see on the screen, there it says five minutes. That's five minutes from the time of dispatch, not from the time that they left the station. That's from the time the alarm came into the station, which means the firefighters getting to the engine, putting on their safety gear, responding to the incident, and setting up command. The first in company officer had to process all that information in a very quick time with a victim to be rescued, and had a plan in place, and was already getting his crews in action within five minutes and 22 seconds from the time of dispatch. That's not just rolling out the window. That's a huge time mark there. The, this picture here shows the, this was after the incident. That was the staircase going to the second floor, which had cut off the escape of the victim who was trapped in her, the second floor bedroom. Within six minutes and 27 seconds, that's firefighters leaving the station and pulling hose lines, entering the door to make an attack on the fire was six minutes and 27 seconds. That's impressive. Next one. This is the backside of the building, which shows the balcony. The victim had luckily gone back into her room, closed the door, isolated herself, and our firefighters were able to throw ladders to the second floor balcony there in rescue. And that was Engineer Godel and firefighter Giannetti, who, their quick actions, throwing the ladders up there and being able to get that victim down. And one more time point to look at here, the whole fire, the fire was knocked down within 10 minutes and 42 seconds. So very impressive numbers to look at all around. Just to look at industry standards, for NFA 17, 1710 calls for the arrival of a second four-person engine within second, within six minutes, and the arrival of the entire balance of a first alarm. So that's three engines, a truck, and a battalion chief within eight minutes. We had a second engine on scene within five minutes and seven seconds, and our entire first alarm was on scene within seven minutes and 49 seconds from the time of dispatch. We also met the benchmark because of our staffing levels with that incident. NFPA calls for 17 firefighters, and we were able to match just that with our responding apparatus, demonstrating the importance of 4-0 staffing that we have. Okay, next. So it's, this incident really highlights the caliber of the firefighters here in Fullerton, their training, their dedication, and what makes this fire department so great. Their quick and decisive actions are what resulted in the successful rescue. And so we'd like to recognize those employees tonight. Unfortunately, a few of them were not able to make it. We have one that's at the hospital right now transporting a patient, and one of them, their car broke down, so, on the way here. So, Mayor Whitaker, if you want to join us on the floor here?
I'll come down. I know Chief Loser said that they would be uncomfortable being presented these. I know it gets hot in here at times, but nothing like the structures that they have to race into on occasion.
Yeah.
I'll be right down.
All righty. Go ahead, next slide. So I'll go ahead and read off the names, and we'll bring them up one by one. Family members, you're encouraged to come down with them when we call your significant So the first person I'd like to recognize, he's actually not here this evening, is Wade Fisher. He was not able to make it tonight, but I'd like to bring up Ishmael Materino, Captain Materino.
And also with that, we're, along with the proclamation and the commendation, we're presenting each of these, of our personnel with a distinguished service medal. So, next up will be Engineer Jay Wasniewski, was not able to make it, his car broke down, but Engineer Chris Godel. Next up, we'll have Engineer Colin White. Firefighter Evan Kamba. Unfortunately, Brian Janovic was not able to make it. Dave Brown didn't make it back. No, he's still at the hospital transporting a patient. So Eric Giannetti. All right, that concludes ours. Thank you again, and a round of applause for these guys again.
I'd like to now invite up Senior Librarian Kyle Samudio to accept a proclamation declaring library card signup month.
We're just going to join you with the presentation down here. Do you have a presentation to make, council?
I just have a, yeah, I just want to say that September is library card signup month. And this September, we're giving away free column kits to everybody who signs up. And we brought some column kits for the council members. And if you don't have a library card or you want to update yours, you can, this now would be the perfect time to do so. And I just want to remind that everyone that you don't need to live in Fullerton to get one. And everything that the library offers is completely free, including free audiobooks and free downloadable eBooks. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We're trying to track down the proclamation right now. We think the firefighters made off with it.
Oh.
That's the Tolo one?
I said, I thought I might have tracked it.
Well, if we know where to find you, we will bring that to you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll.
I don't think you can picture the three of you.
Oh, there it was. It was tied up illegally.
Can I get one more picture?
Thank you. Thanks.
We are trying a couple new items tonight, as far as the way the agenda works. What will be occurring this evening is that we're going to hear our regular business items first. Public comments will come at the back of the meeting. We've had some difficulties recently with questions of consent items and whether they would be pulled or not. So we're experimenting with this, and what we'll do is try to work through our items very rapidly here and get to listening to the public on the back end.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Given that maybe the, we didn't notify them in advance, and some people may be here for public comments, could we continue public comments now and notice, make a notice now that next month, we would put them in the bag? Just because I know some people come for public comments because they know it's at the beginning, and our regular items may get us to 11:00 PM. And then that will deter some of our public comment residents here who want to do public comments to maybe not stick around. I mean, I don't mind experimenting, but I think if we would have given proper notice that this meeting, we're going to have public comments after all the other items, that may have been a little more fair to the people who are here to do public comments.
Well, I'll... We've had many evenings where you've stressed willingness to be fair to those who are here to have business conducted first and foremost, so that's a bit of a switch.
Well, just because we didn't notify, I mean, I don't mind doing it as long as we give them proper notice, I think.
I'll leave it to the other council members. What say you on this?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I hope you can hear me. I prefer also, if we have public comments in the beginning, now that we, seems like we don't have a consent item calendar here, so there should not be any confusion. But there are families with kids who want to go back to their homes, might want to state their affairs early in the meeting. So I prefer that to continue. Thank you.
Okay.
I mean, are we able to get a, are we able to get a grasp of about how many we're expecting at this point? How many, you know?
How many have requested to speak at this stage, Madam Clerk?
I have 12 people who signed up for public comments, but generally, we have people who also don't sign up. So I'd say at least 12.
Right.
And two hands raised in Zoom, so at least 14.
Okay. So what's your preference?
So that's about 45 minutes. We've got about 19 or 20 items on the agenda at this point, so, I mean, I don't know, are we able to, are there any, I mean, any members of the public who have not signed up to speak that will be speaking or would like to speak? So 13, 15, so then that's right around, I mean...
If we could keep it to that, then maybe we could get this agenda done in time. But as the city clerk has mentioned, we get a lot of drifting on top of that.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I suggest, I know I hate doing this, but maybe we, for tonight, we limit it to two minutes versus three. I may expedite some of this and keep this in front, and then, but, all right.
People want to get their say, I understand that.
No, I understand that, too.
But, but often, what we hear is a lot of repeat, 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 and that's why sometimes in order to get to the business of the evening, if there are groups of people who could assign one person to be the spokesperson on a point of view, that could be most helpful. What say you, Councilmember Jung?
I'm in agreement with taking what the folks that have signed up to do that, and let's, let's hear them out and move this along, sir.
All right. Well, those who are interested in addressing the council on items that are not on the agenda, please come forward.
And if you'll go to the microphone in the corner here on the opposite wall of where I'm sitting, and then whoever gets there first can start. I see them bracing over there. And, don't hurt each other on the way over there. And the rest of you can just line up, and we'll take you in order.
Good evening.
Metnal?
Yes.
I'm Yolanda Goodwin. I am a visitor from Canada, and I'm deferring my two minutes to Mr. Todd Harrison.
Okay.
My name is Todd Harrison, and I'm still one of the endangered residents of Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor, council members that were sitting two years ago, and welcome to those new before me. Despite the best efforts of John Saunders and COVID-19 to get rid of me and my neighbors, many of us have survived. My beloved Pamela is not the only one whose death I consider him responsible for. Since I last appeared before this council in March of 2020, Mr. Saunders is still more of a threat to the seniors like me than the pandemic. We have been immunized against COVID-19. We're still... We have been immunized against COVID-19, we're still at risk from him. It's now been over two years since he announced his purchase of Rancho La Paz with the initial 60% rent increase. That event started the wave of panic illness, forced sales, and death that has stalked us since. That also started my appearances here, and it took the pandemic to keep me away. While those on this council, the City Council of Anaheim, and the uncaring elected rulers of Orange County failed us, we ultimately gained some allies that brought about a state law. We now have some effective anti-predatory rent limitations in place at the start of 2022. Because of that, I and my neighbors voted as a block to keep Governor Newsom in office because he signed that bill. Eventually, every elected official that we are able to vote about will face our judgment at the polls. Those of us that survive have long memories. Since mere disgust at how Mr. Saunders did, and still does, assault the residents of Rancho La Paz has not motivated our elected officials, I will remind any of that listen of some of the reasons they should be paying attention to our seniors. This council spends a lot of time, effort, and taxpayer money trying, and for the most part, failing to resolve the issues of the homeless on the streets of Fullerton. You need to remember that one of the best ways to handle this is to reduce the number of people forced out of their homes in the first place. Be sure you continue and support the CBRA program. Granted, it does help predatory landlords more than their tenants, but it does something for the limited number of us that qualify. I'm back, and until Mr. Saunders manages to drive me away or kill me, I will keep appearing here. Every time, you will be reminded of all the chances missed before to help us, and your obligation to support all the residents of Fullerton, not just the ones with the deepest pockets and the most lawyers. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Paulette Chafee, the Fourth District Ambassador in Orange County. As you might already know, World Kindness Day is November 13. It is a global day that promotes the importance of being kind to each other, to yourself, and to the world. World Kindness Day reminds us that the compassion for others is what binds us together. Each year, on November 13, the Fourth District in Orange County holds the Kindness Awards Event and honors those who have exhibited exceptional acts of kindness from each of the Fourth District cities. Do you know anyone who engages in exceptional kindness and community service? We are now accepting nominations through October 1st, and we hope you will help us spread the word and nominate a deserving individual in our community. Please visit our website, www.bos4.oCGov.com to download the form and email it to our office. The information is also on a flyer, which I will pass out tonight to people here. We are excited and look forward to receiving nominations for the Fourth District 2021 Kindness Awards Ceremony. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and the City Council Members. My name is Tony Pakus, and I have resided in Fullerton for 17 years. I attend last week's public forum on the budget. As always, I was impressed with the staff's presentation, the city manager's handling of the questions, and as always, the shining example of the Fullerton citizens' concerns and caring via the public commons. I was not impressed by the city council's response to the presentation and your response to the pleading of the city manager for direction. I will be surprised by what he comes up with, the scant, vague responses given. What is wrong with you? Is the budget process overwhelming you? Mayor Whitaker responds that a 2% cut is normal for these situations. It may be 2% for you, but 2% means 14 people are laid off. Decisions have consequences. 14 families no longer have a continuing paycheck. Are you, Mr. Whitaker, going to meet with each one person and tell them they are fired, or take the coward's way out and have the managers have to give the bad news? I have known you for well over 10 years, and I have never seen that person. And the cut is not necessary. Staff has given you scenario four, eliminates all need for cuts, brings a surplus from the ARP fund to do the right thing. Bring back city jobs to Fullerton. And if monies are left over, I would ask the city council to provide where those monies are to be spent and the amount. It is called a budget, not a personal piggy bank. Our streets remind me of a third-world city, trash everywhere, and parks going to hell. You have the power and responsibility to change that, but do you have the willpower? Mr. Dunlap, where have you been the last 10 months? Obviously not here. You keep asking for an organizational chart, and one was provided to everyone in the original budget packet. I assume you recopied, and maybe you even read it. You show no proof of that. You talk about roads, but do not attend the original budget approval. You talk about your daughters pointing out trash in the street, but don't acknowledge the problem. You want everybody to hand everything on a silver platter, but can't even be at these meetings on time. Why don't you follow Mr. Jung's statement last, last week, that he will, he is willing to put in the time to understand the city's issues like he did with the police ride-along on a Saturday evening downtown? I am sure that opened his eyes and also gained respect for the Fullerton police, of the Fullerton police. When are you doing the ride-along? I'm sure if you asked the Fullerton Police Department, they would pick you up from your house and later deliver you back home. We don't want to inconvenience you. Thank you, Mr. Jung and Mr. Silver for participating in the presentation. Sorry, Mr. Zara, you weren't there, but all you miss is a dysfunctional city council, but you already know that. I expect better from all of you, or get out and let someone who cares about Fullerton serve. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Maloney. I worked for the City of Fullerton for the past six years. I am the fleet maintenance technician for the city. I provide, or I make sure the vehicles are equipped with properly working and to be able to serve the community. I'm the vice president of the Fullerton Municipal Employee Federation. I grew up in Fullerton. My parents still live here, and my mother-in-law, both live in District 2. I feel like this place is my home. Recently, our union members have been watching discussion about how to move forward with the budget. We hope the city will invest back into the core services. There are immediate needs, and their immediate needs are not being addressed. The city hasn't been able to keep employees. They end up leaving before they reach probation. We are training employees to go to other cities where the morale is way better. Frontline employees are working multiple positions. The city is short-staffed, which leads to more overtime and less services. If you don't believe me, please take the time and come see how the rank-and-file workers serve the community. The workers at the FMEF are proud to serve the residents and businesses of Fullerton. We need to restore services back to our community so we can do our jobs correctly. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joshua Gonzalez. I worked with the city for seven years now. I work in the equipment division. When I came here seven years ago, when we come to work, I'd go to the parking lot right, right on time. I'd actually have to park outside, because there's no parking spots in the lot. Now I get on, get here on time today, there's probably like 20 open spots. You know, we're losing men. We need, you know, work for the services for all, you know, for the whole city. I was once told, years ago, we used to have 20 technicians in the garage. Now we're down to about six. We're running thin. All departments are, you know, running thin. We all take great part in our work, you know, the streets, water, sewer, fire, you know, police, we all take a great part with the city, for the public to, you know, have a clean, clean city, be safe, everything, and I just don't believe cuts are something that should be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor, my name is Ed Vargas. I'm the president of the Fullerton Municipal Employees Association. I've been an employee for about 20 years now. In fact, this month would be my, will be my 20 years working for the city. I just want to go ahead and talk about the upcoming decision you guys are going to be making on the budget cuts. And it just seems like our employees feel disappointed in the perceived lack of support that we feel from council because of the, what we're hearing about, you know, budget cuts and budget cuts and budget cuts and, and, let me get my glasses going here, so. You know, employees, they're tired of trying to maintain adequate services with less and less. You know, the workload, it doesn't subside, and it's being felt every day from the everyday field worker, office worker, all the way up with management. Management has a tough job also, because they're trying to maintain things with not enough staffing to go around. And I guess if I was up, sitting up on your, on one of your chairs, the two questions I'd be asking is, number one, why are so many employees leaving for other agencies? And I guess the second question would be, why aren't we attracting any employees from other agencies to come on and work for the City of Fullerton? So, you know, we renovate parks, and they all look nice, but if you don't have the staffing level to keep them up, is it really, you know, at what point does, do they start to deteriorate? You know, everybody wants to have a nice park. I don't care what part of town you're in. You know, some parks are being, because of staffing levels, they're being, taken care of once a month. If I was a citizen, and I used to be a citizen, I'd be asking questions like, why is my park, why is my neighborhood park only being done once a month? Who makes the decision as to what gets done once a month, or what gets done every two weeks? I would like a nice park to have, you know, to be able to walk around in. It's my neighborhood, too. All neighborhoods are the same here in Fullerton. So, also, you know, your Parks and Rec, all those after-school programs, they get cut, so a lot of the kids have nowhere else to go. You could send them maybe to the library, but then you start cutting the library, and there's nowhere for them to go. We don't want kids, you know, they're at a, at a time, especially some of the kids, where, you know, you could go one way or another. And the last thing that we would want for the City of Fullerton is for them to do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Your time is up.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leanna Fercucci, and I am the co-owner of CF Dance Academy and the Classic Fullerton Ballroom here in downtown Fullerton. On Saturday, August 28th, we held our 13th Annual Rock to Beat at the Fullerton Downtown Plaza. I've typically had this at the Knott's Berry Farm Hotel, but wanted to keep it outdoors this year for COVID and to keep our families safe. I did bring a video to show you, but I can't show that tonight, so I'll go ahead and email it to you all. I wanted to come to council tonight and to thank the City of Fullerton for giving us the opportunity to have our first in-person event in almost two years, all while keeping it safe for our CF staff and families. I wanted to give a big, special thank you to the Fullerton Parks and Rec Department, the First Christian Church who partnered with us so our kids could use the bathrooms there, the Fullerton Museum staff who was awesome that day at our event, John Clements from Parks and Rec who helped me with the permit for the event, and Councilmember Ahmad Zara for coming and visiting the event and presenting at the event. For this event, we partnered with multiple downtown businesses, enabling a bustling day of engagement for the downtown Fuller Shops and Restaurants. Thank you, Fullerton, for helping CF Dance give our dancers and families an amazing day together celebrating dance and community. We look forward to offering more community events like these in our city, and we thank you for going above and beyond the last year and a half for supporting the small businesses in downtown Fullerton as we face so many challenges with the COVID-19 pandemic. We were, we also had an outdoor, I know we're not a restaurant, but we had an outdoor space temporarily that was permitted, and that helped us so much. We are grateful to still be fighting to regain what has been lost, and your support has definitely been aided in this fight. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Good evening. It's rare that I actually have to raise a microphone. My name is Laura Bilonix, and I am a member of the Fullerton Alano Club, and just want to just keep reintroducing myself and become a familiar face. Thank you for taking time to listen to me, Mayor, and the fellow council members. I do appreciate your time. Part of how we, as any community, flourish is by actually fostering the community amongst ourselves, and what we've all been starved from during this epidemic has been that interpersonal contact. About just right when COVID hit and when all of the shutdown took place, we lost our, the building that we regularly have meetings in, the owner sold the property. We have since been looking for a place to, to start meeting again and have run into difficulty because of the very specific needs for the types of meetings that we hold, along with parking needs and everything else. We did participate with you, or in, the, the opportunity to bid for becoming lease partners with the city for a few of the properties, one of which we really do have our eyes on still, even though we didn't get the, the approval through this bidding process. Would love to still see if there is a way that the city would reconsider us using the Isaac Walton cabin for our meetings. We have many people who are well-versed in the upkeep of buildings and maintenance, and would love to integrate ourselves into the, the community, provide services also for the, the people who serve Fullerton. We would like to establish a more effective relationship and to be a resource for the people who serve this community. I'd like to see us being a little bit more interactive and, again, providing information about the solution to addiction and alcoholism, which we've touched on on different, you know, areas already with people who have spoken in the need for how we deal with the, the harder cases, shall we say, with homelessness and whatnot. We believe that, and I know several people personally who have been brought back from the streets and are wonderfully useful people in society. So thank you again for the time, and you have a great evening. Thank you.
I'm Jan Bloomfield. I'm also on the board of the Fullerton Alano Club. We're just keeping our name out in front of you. If you hear of a building that we could go into, we are in dire need of being able to start meetings again. And I was, I believe that the city has CARES money that they can use for drug and alcohol rehabilitation, that possibly they could get that Isaac Walton building up to speed, and we could use that, even if it was just short-term, until we found something else. So I don't want to take up a lot of this, the council's time, but I do want to keep our name in your ears, so thank you.
Mayor Whitaker and members of the city council, hi. My name is Eddie Carmona, and I'm here to invite you, as well as the community, to Assemblymember Craig Silva's Coffee and Conversation. If you like legislative updates, if you like conversations with your fellow, your community, come on down on October 2nd at 10:00 AM at the Rolling Hills Park up on Bassett and Cherry Road. Check out our social media, Instagram, Facebook. You'll find more information there. It's going to be a great event. I hope to see you guys all there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. Jose Trinidad Casangetta. So first, I wanted to thank you for moving finally on the PAC Drive Parks, the Pacific Drive Park renovations. I think that's sorely needed, especially in that area. I had the privilege of attending Electrify Expo, which was their first inaugural e-mobility exposition at the Orange County Great Park this past weekend. And what I saw really got me excited about the number of electric vehicles hitting the market. market, e-bikes that are growing in Orange County. There was a Orange County Transportation Authority Act of Transportation Committee panel with local Orange County businesses that are selling these e-bikes, and it's just skyrocketing from there. So, I really want to help encourage whatever we can do to promote the use of these mobility devices because I hadn't ridden a bike in a long time, but when I first got an e-bike, I just felt like I can go all over the hills in Fullerton. Everything became so much more accessible and as long as I'm wearing a helmet, I feel very safe. Except for the crazy drivers on Orange Door, they're crazy. The second thing is the, there's now a growing market for electric passenger airplanes or helicopters. I'm not sure what, you know, people have settled on in terms of the term, but we have a huge opportunity with the Fullerton Airport to be able to start working with LA as these new electric passenger air vehicles start hitting the market and coming to Southern California, because they will come. And it's something that we should take advantage of because we have a municipal airport. I know that their budget, their margins are pretty solid, but there's always opportunities, right? So, it's worth looking at and having the Fullerton Airport General Manager just be part of those conversations. And last, I wanted to ask if we can get an update on what is happening with JP-23? There is constant protests outside on the corner of Harbor and Commonwealth. From what I understand, the owner of JP-23 seems to not be treating this very seriously and it is a very serious matter when you have regular, not civically engaged Fullerton residents talking about JP-23 as the rape bar. Like, that's their reputation now. They're the rape bar. So, we don't need any of that. We don't need, you know, business owners that are attacking other downtown business owners and hopefully we can get an update.
Thank you. Your time is up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you so much. My name is Eklun Nunsy and I came here very grateful to all of you. Thank you for the groundbreaking that we have yesterday at Pacific Drive Park. It took us seven years to all the parents to advocate and the neighbors in the area to get this possible. Thank you, Mr. Silva, Assemblywoman Sharon Kim Silva, Mr. Jung, Mayor Whitaker, and our councilwoman Ahmad Zahra. Thank you so much, all of you, for your support to our community. We are very grateful for this finally becoming a reality for our neighborhoods. And like they say before, we, we always advocating for parks, but we need to maintain our parks. And this is a crisis that we have. Please don't, don't have cuts. We have to take care of our staff. Please do it for their sakes because we need a healthy staff for helping us. We have 53 parks. We don't have staff. We need public safety. Today, we celebrate our firefighters because they are heroes in our community, our police department too. But you know what? They need to be, to recognize and not be understaffed to perform because that is what we want. The business of a city is to give services to the community and that should be always the number-one priority. And please, and I have a question too regarding what is happening with the hiring of our new city manager. If the community, we can have some input in the hiring of the new city manager, in some way, you know, what is our expectations and what is happening regarding that? Thank you so much.
Good evening, council. Just before I start, my name is Mike Rodriguez, and first I got to say rest in peace, Joe Lasorda. She's up there with Tommy now. I'm a huge Dodger fan, you can see. So, putting that aside now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Justice for Hector Coalition. So, I'd like to speak on behalf of the group, and we are still demanding that Officer Farrell be taken off the streets. We're unsatisfied with Spitzer's decision, right, not to prosecute Officer Farrell for the killing of Hector Hernandez. We now know that Spitzer is more interested in supporting abuse of law enforcement rather than his constituents, right, that are the victims of law enforcement. And this is how we still feel about the city of Fullerton, unfortunately, as well. Also, why has the Fullerton Police Budget gone up the last two years, like I mentioned that the last time I was here, while cuts are happening in all these other sectors of the city? Almost half of the budget goes to the Fullerton Police of the General Fund, but taking jobs from other sectors like Parks and Rec, right, which helps the youth, does nothing to help keep our community safe. The final point on this issue is that Spitzer made his decision in July, but Chief Dunn still has not released all the evidence to us under the Public Records Request Act. The Fullerton Police Department is currently not in compliance with the law. So, I'm just here to tell you that Justice for Hector is not going anywhere and we'll be back. On another note, like someone else mentioned earlier, why is JP-23 still open? After these countless stories of sexual assault against women, that place is still allowed to do business? And then I hear that Blanquell, the Mexican art store just right next to it, is in jeopardy of being shut down to bring in another brewery into downtown Fullerton? My recommendation is this, shut down JP-23 and work out a resolution that keeps Blanquell here. That place has been around since 1979. It's a cultural landmark in downtown. Please don't make sure it's not pushed out. Finally, I have to leave early, so I'm also here just on a final issue to support independent redistricting, a commission to support independent redistricting. I mean, come on, it's common sense. We don't want council members to lead these decisions, right? It's a conflict of interest, no matter who's up there. So, please let the community decide. All right. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
It looks like all of our speakers in chambers, oh, I see Bernard getting up. For those of you in Zoom, stay close because we'll be calling on you next.
Hello, my name is Bernard and I am a Fullerton resident. Mayor Whitaker, I highly question your ability to properly parse out relevant information. Your stunningly bizarre attempt at a flex backfired in spectacular fashion. Okay, all right, you're right. This is your third time as mayor, not your second time, yet you are still completely clueless and apathetic about our city and the atrocities at JP-23 and your district are still going on. Third time as mayor. To Councilmember Jung's perpetual need to shift responsibility, you are then to blame as this is your third time as mayor, and yet we have the conditions of our roads and degradation of public safety. Councilmember Jung, you must love hearing yourself speak. All you do is blame others and tell us what we already know. In the past 10 months, what has this council majority accomplished? We need solution-oriented people on the dais, not problem-oriented people. Member Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap, run the city like a business. Are you kidding me? Okay, the next time your house is on fire, when you call for help, if they even answer the phone, let them conduct themselves like a business. If the marginal revenue does not at least equal marginal cost, they should let your house burn. Is that what you want? Unacceptable. If you don't understand this, you don't belong on the dais. And Mayor Whitaker, if pensions are such a big problem, give up yours. Go Bruins.
And seeing no one else in chambers, coming to microphone, we will move over to Zoom comments. And the first hand I have up is Sam Adriano. I apologize if I got your last name wrong.
Yeah, close enough, I guess.
Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, so, when I, and many others, applied years back for ADU permits, we look forward to leasing our ADUs on a short-term or long-term basis after that. And I, along with many others, executed a land use agreement developed by the city regarding the ADU. And nowhere in the land use agreement did it indicate any restrictions as to the use of the ADU. And investing, after investing a considerable amount of money, we find our options to recruit that amount on a short-term basis totally eliminated and on a long-term basis fraught with risks no one saw coming thanks to COVID and a state eviction moratorium. After City Council decided to implement new AD rules regarding short-term rentals, I and many others are left with only a currently risky long-term rental. When someone invests in a business, he would never dare change the rules after the permits were issued without considering a grandfather clause. So, I would ask that the council revisit the ADU short-term rental ban and allow those who built before the ban to run on a short-term basis, even if you only give us permission for, say, five years, at least we can hope to recover our investment. And I've noticed lately that the legislators continue to step in and take over local zoning control when dealing with issues like ADUs and just last week with the signing of SB9. While I used to believe that zoning control was better to handle by local governments, I'm starting to think that although the state may not have the best ideas when dealing with zoning, they are at least fair, clear, and consistent about implementation. Investment in real estate and our homes are no less important or deserving of timely and consistent zoning laws than any other investment in the city. And once again, with the passage of SB9, I wonder if that law will be implemented and then changed time and time again, so no one knows where the law will ultimately land or how long that will take. Thank you.
And we have a caller with the number ending in 9894. You should be able to unmute and speak.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is Diane Venna, 35-year Fullerton resident. My comments tonight are directed at actions taken by this council at your last meeting of August 20th. Some on the council voted against entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement for affordable housing at 1600 Commonwealth with the previously on 7/6 Selected Developer, National Core, with Pathways of Hope to provide social services. The 7/20 decision was based on the objections of some in the nearby neighborhoods who objected to the inclusion of Pathways of Hope. Innuendos and accusations of lying, misleading, lack of transparency, among other things, were made without any proof or examples given and to justify their lack of trust. Based on this, a vote denying the ENA was taken. This was very unfair. People can advocate for whatever they want, but when accusations are made, they should be required to provide proof. I am asking that National Core with Pathways of Hope be considered, along with the other developers, when you make your future selection, and I ask that you respond to my comments tonight. For the rest of my time, I am going to give my reasons. The group that objected does not represent the entire neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood and they do not represent me and many of the people that I have spoken to. They turned in a petition with approximately 270 signatures. That does not represent 270 homes, as some probably represented family members from the same household. The affected neighborhood is much larger than this, and so the voice of these people is important, but it does not represent the entire extremely large affected neighborhoods, but only a fragment. I attended two years ago all the meetings regarding the proposal at that time for permanent supportive housing. I emailed you that I found Pathways of Hope to be trustworthy, willing to answer questions, and transparent. The fact that the proposal plan for permanent supportive housing was still on their website was not deceptive, but still a viable plan for the future. That proposal two years ago never came before the council, so for it to be on their website is not underhanded, but perfectly reasonable. The plans of the council changed to seeking affordable housing at that site, and now their website has been updated. The complaint that people were not notified of these decisions, I do not accept. I look back over past agendas and at least seven weeks of agenda projections included this issue. Prior to the July 6th meeting, all developer plans were accessible online under details of the meeting. Anyone could read them and advocate for whatever plan they wanted. So many responsible, respectable people who are familiar with Pathways of Hope spoke on July 20th in favor of the ENA. Why were these not given at least equal weight? Please require proof of accusations, educate yourselves, use that to educate all of us, and base your decisions on these things, not on the unsubstantiated statements and accusations of some, even when made sincerely by good people. Thank you.
And that is it for Zoom callers. And I believe, did we have one more person from the public who wanted to speak on public comments? If you do, come on up to the microphone because this is your last chance to speak on public This would be items not on the agenda.
I'm on for the agenda.
Okay, then we'll call you when that item's up. And that is all our speaker, our mayor's gone. That is all our speakers, Mayor Pro Tem.
Great, thank you. Are there any, I guess, staff communications reports at this time, Mr. City Manager?
No, not at this time.
Okay, then we'll come back to council comments, sure.
If I may, it's, oh, the chief's not here. I thought he was here. I was wanting to see if we could speak on the situation with JP-23 and the current investigation, but since he's not here, we'll have to skip that.
Sure, okay. Mr. Silva, would you like to go first with comments?
Yeah, thank you. Well, just, I want a point of clarification here from what transpired a couple of weeks ago. So, during that discussion, Councilmember Zahra and I had requested an item to be brought back regarding California workforce housing. And then I guess I'd like to ask the city manager and the community, the new community development department head, are we clear with what we are bringing back, what we had requested in terms of bringing back a, a presentation that includes a specific project proposed by the city? Are we okay with that?
That is our intent, to bring back a specific project that's being proposed at this time.
All right, thank you. That was just a little confusion. And then a couple more things. I just want to congratulate and promote the downtown market on Thursdays. I've been there a couple of times. A great time for, if you live in the city, go out there, get your produce, listen to some music, and enjoy the evening. And I also want to congratulate Cal State Fullerton and for hosting a, a little, a little gathering to promote and honor Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month. And we got to hear about what Cal State Fullerton is transpiring and doing to, to not just help or promote the Hispanic, but in general, all of these students that go there. And lastly, where is Mr. Castaneda's comment about the airport? I'd just like to say that our city manager, our airport manager, has been on top of that and has been, I think, leading the conversations to bringing in those smaller electrical planes, jets into our, our, our airport. So, our airport manager is really top-notch and has been doing a great job. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we'll send it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jung?
Mr. Mayor and council. I start this evening out bearing heartbreaking news, Mr. Mayor, the recent passing of Mark Hanson. I witnessed firsthand Mr. Hanson, who at the time managed Senator Newman's campaign. His appreciation and support of the Korean-American community in Fullerton was exemplary. Indeed, it's with great pride. I call him a friend, something so rare in politics these days. My heart goes out to his family and his friends. We all lost a genuinely good man who worked very hard for the residents of Fullerton. I suppose time slowly heals the wounds of loss. I count on that, Mr. Mayor, because I will miss him terribly in the arena. Today is Chuseok in Korea, Korean Thanksgiving. It marks one of the most important holidays in Korean It marks one of the most important holidays in Korean culture. An opportunity for Koreans to gather as families, celebrate their ancestors, and give thanks for their many blessings. In this time of great uncertainty and a global pandemic, we have many things to be thankful for. I would like to wish all Korean Americans in our community a happy Korean Thanksgiving. We did not meet in early September, sir, so I'd like to wish all of those in our community of Jewish faith a blessed Rosh Hashanah and a good year. I also want to recognize Yom Kippur. May you all be sealed in the book of life. September is also Hispanic Heritage Month, as Councilman Silva mentioned. It gives us time to reflect on and celebrate the various cultures and contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans in our community. Our cultural variety continues to enhance and benefit all of our daily lives, and we should welcome their brilliant gifts to our national collective. I want to share some good news tonight as well. Nearly three quarters of a million Californians lifted themselves out of poverty this year, a combination of the president's expanded child tax credit and a rise in wages per employment demand needs have immediately helped so many in our community. As I thank our president once more, I want to remind those in our community that good governance is most often cooperation and compromise to tackle large problems, not just saying feel-good things to get likes. Many years ago, I volunteered as a coach for my son's Pop Warner team. I recall one day, one of my coaches pointing out a young man who was acutely watching our practice routine at a local park. Intrigued, I asked the then nine-year-old boy to join in. Smart as a whip and equipped with a fascination for football, this boy soon overcame his inexperience, became one of the better players on our team, and one of my son's best friends. I never knew this young man earned less than an A in school. Being a Korean American, there are external pressures and generational expectations to be a model student, all things I was acutely familiar with. However, the burden of those pressures can oftentimes be crushing. I suppose they were for him as well, because his first suicide attempt was his sophomore year in high school, two more followed before he graduated, and too many times thereafter. I say all this personal information to you this evening because September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in this country. Nearly a million and a half Americans attempt it each year, and close to 50,000 Americans die by suicide every year. What is particularly terrifying is suicide is the second leading cause of death among teens, young adults, only behind accidents. So I urge those in our community this evening to advocate that our elementary and high school districts have better mental health care counseling available for our young students. I encourage all of you to do everything you can to help those quietly suffering that require our vocal attention. And to all the students in our community who recently returned in-person learning, I do have one small request. If you see someone who is struggling to make friends or is being bullied because the person is shy or not in the in crowd or doesn't wear the in clothes, please step up and be kind. You never know what the person may be facing outside of school, and your kindness may just make the hugest difference in their life. 1-800-273-8255 is the national suicide prevention lifeline number for anyone requiring help tonight or in the future. Please remember that you are not alone. There is no night or problem that can defeat the sunrise of hope, and I cling to that. Another brief word about our current drought. Both Lake Mead and Lake Powell water levels are projected to continue to decline over the next few years. I want to continue to encourage our parks and recreation staff and our public work staff to reimagine what our city parks and trails should look like, how they should be designed, and where they should be placed, because static green turf for mere aesthetic purposes is both fundamentally irresponsible now and cost preventative for our environmental future. This drought is critical for our future welfare and our quality of life. While we are not in an emergency for water just yet, and there has been little news coverage on this issue because of COVID and foreign military involvement dominating the news cycle, please begin to take it seriously as water is life. And finally, one other word about vaccinations. The FDA recently granted full approval of the Pfizer vaccine. It is one less hurdle for the unvaccinated to continue their ill-advised holdout. I want to continue to encourage Fullerton residents to get vaccinated. District one, my district, has achieved 70% fully vaccination rate, second only behind the Mayor Protem's District two at 75. But this is no time to pat ourselves on the back, as there is much work to do, particularly in our three other districts. Now, the president and school districts across the country are entertaining vaccination requirements to mitigate the virus's new variants. I want you to please consider doing your part, get the jab in the arm. And a word to the wise, please do not take livestock dewarmer. You are not a horse or a cow. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, in honor of its 30th anniversary, it puts lotion on its skin or else it gets a hose again. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Zara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will keep this brief. I just want to thank you for hosting me virtually tonight. I've been away overseas for over two and a half weeks, and unfortunately, I came back sick. And it is not COVID, but I am a little feverish. But I didn't want to miss this important meeting, so that is all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Mr. Mayor Protem Dunlap?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One comment I wanted to make, and I see Director Fritzl there in the second row this evening. But I had a question in response to, or in relation to, one of the questions that was asked about ADUs. And I guess there was a gentleman that called in, indicated that he's unable to rent that out, you know, because of some restrictions related to short term rentals and such. And so I guess my question would be, has the threshold been met? Or has the capacity been reached? Do we know that? So I think that would be helpful for people to understand, because, you know, I think, I mean, it's not what I wanted, but there was a, you know, sort of a cap established. And so if it hasn't been met, that could be an option.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The cap has not been reached for about 80, so we have at least another 20. And we did have several years ago where, to get an ADU, you had to sign a covenant that you would not rent it out, so that's the issues that we're going through right now.
Okay, thank you. So lastly, well, actually, two more things. One, I just wanted to encourage anyone who has received or is still receiving parking tickets. Please don't hesitate to share those with me if you feel that you've been issued one in error. We are still working on, I guess, signage throughout the city. And so, you know, would love to help with that if at all possible. So please don't hesitate to send me a copy of that and can certainly work with the police department in getting that resolved. Lastly, I did want to point out, you know, as we are going to be, well, on the eve of Tommy Lasorda Day, very excited about two, you know, parts of the festivities, specifically including the, I guess, the Little League tournament that's going to be taking place both at the Fullerton Sports Complex, starting at 5:00 PM, and also at Unical Field on Brea Boulevard, starting also at 5:00. There's going to be some, you know, great fun, food trucks and more at both of those events. And of course, you won't want to miss, on Amridge Field, at 7:30 PM, high school tournament, Sunny Hills versus Fullerton. So anyone that knows me knows that I'm a diehard Yankee fan, but the Dodgers are the home team and always rooted for them. So very excited to help celebrate our fellow Fullertonian, you know, and baseball legend Tommy Lasorda's legacy tomorrow. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. A couple of things. We had a nice event the other day at the Fullerton Arboretum, which had been closed during much of the lockdown and the pandemic. It's been open again since July. And we had an official reopening ceremony there. Cal State University Fullerton President Fram Vergie emceed that event. And Councilmember Silva was there, as was I. And it's one more sign that we are slowly in the stop and start summer. We're slowly coming out of, you know, our seclusion a little bit. The Fullerton Arboretum, some people may not know, it was originally funded and founded pretty much by the city of Fullerton, became a joint endeavor with the university for some time. Fairly recently, it's been now turned over to the university pretty much to operate. But I mentioned at that meeting to President Vergie that it still is a de facto Fullerton park, and it's a great place in our increasingly urbanized environment to be able to get away a little bit. It is a Class Four Arboretum, which the president said was one of only seven in the nation that rated as a Class Four that were controlled by universities. So it is one of the nice things about Fullerton, that we have such a place to go and take in nature a little bit. I wanted to mention something on water. We haven't had very huge happenings there of late. We've been tied up with PFOS and PFAS and some of the requirements to remove levels of those contaminants in the water, at least below regulators' required limits. And that continues. But I also, as part of being on the OCWD board, I'm appointed the vice chair of SAPA, which is the Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority. It's located in Riverside and represents most of the entire watershed, but most of our three counties, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange County. An interesting thing came up in this morning's meeting, which is follow-up on the weather modification, which is being tried this year. We've made some investments, so they're going to be doing, in effect, ground-based cloud seeding, predominantly ground-based or slope-based. And a conservative estimate was that we may see an 8%, and this is a conservative number, increase in capture of precipitation. This isn't something that'll go on continuously, but it'll be sporadic, depending on certain conditions. But not only on the slopes near the mountains, but now we're looking at some strictly ground-based here in Orange County, which may help to increase at least several percent of our rainfall when we do have rainfall in this area. That is actually a pretty large new source of water. It's a considerable amount of water. And most of that will find its way either through our basins or just generally with flows into the aquifer, where it will help in the recharge efforts that we have there. On the other note, we do have something new up here on the council diocese tonight, which is the Italian flag. And this setup is for tomorrow morning, where we will have a virtual signing covenant with the city of Tolo, Italy, to become our newest sister city. We have three now. This will be a fourth, and it brings Europe into the equation. There are many commonalities that I think we share with the residents of Tolo, one of which is that we have their Mediterranean climate without the Mediterranean. And we look forward to many years of warm relations, relationships with Tolo. And as the Mayor Protem talked about earlier, quite a while back, we determined that tomorrow, the Autumnal Equinox, first day of fall, is going to be Tommy Lasorda Day in the city of Fullerton. And we have all-day-long events and ceremonies, and we're going to have some notable former Dodger players here, too. This was dampened very much this morning with news of the passing of Joe Lasorda, Tommy Lasorda's wife of 70 years. They lived in southwest Fullerton for 58 years. And Tommy was loyal not only to his wife of 70 years, but he was loyal as a resident in this city. I would invite anybody who's interested, who's a Dodger fan or interested in things Italian or Italian food or whatever, to check out. And it's posted even at the front of the council entrance here in the back, which identifies a number of events. Only one of these events has a cost associated with it, is a Fullerton Sister City fundraiser dinner at Angelo and Vinci's Restaurant. But this is something that was intended to be a very positive thing, and now there is certainly some sadness associated with it. Laura Lasorda and her daughter Emily, Tommy's daughter and granddaughter, were expected to be at the event, but I suspect that we will likely not see them tomorrow. But as I said, anyone who wishes to attend any of these events, you're more than welcome, and we look forward to a long mutually beneficial relationship with the residents of Tolo. And with that, Madam Clerk, I may need a little bit of help exactly where we're at on the agenda.
That'll guide you again, since we made so many last-minute changes on you. Your next item would be the public hearing on the Energy Services Agreement, but there is an item on regular business that is related to this, which is the Alley Bridge item. And staff have requested that you hear the Alley Bridge item first. I believe it's item 19. See, I had 14 in my head. I knew I'd get it wrong.
Thank you for that direction. I was going to say that at the close of our meeting today, we will more formally acknowledge the passing of Joe Lasorda. That will be at the end of the meeting.
So if you'd like, if you wouldn't mind taking item 19 out of agenda order and hearing that item next?
Yes, without objection by the council, we shall do that.
Okay, and that'll be your city manager will give you that.
I don't have a presentation on that. I think we've gone over that on several occasions, so if you're ready to proceed, go ahead.
The recommendation on item number 10 is that we approve amendment revising the Alley Bridge Energy Solutions Incorporated Professional Services Agreement fee structure and authorize the city manager to execute that amendment by and between the city of Fullerton and Alley Bridge Energy Solutions Incorporated. Now, the council has had a fair amount of input in this. Without a presentation, I would be open for comment by any members of council at this point, or we shall seek public comment. Seeing no takers on that, I would invite anyone wishing to speak to this item to come forward to the microphone.
I have no one signed up to speak on this item in person, and we have no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, with that, we would bring the item back to the council then, and I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item forward.
Moved by Councilmember Jung.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Silva. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll?
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
No.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
And now we're at public hearing item, which would be item number one, Energy Services Agreement for Infrastructure Modernization at Various City-Owned Facilities and Properties. And this is to consider an agreement with Naresco LLC to implement $8,458,191 in energy efficiency projects. Mr. Grantham?
Oh, really? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you very much. David Grantham, Principal Civil Engineer, upstairs in the Engineering Division. Typically here to talk about streets, but something different today, something a little bit better today. Energy service agreement to modernize some of our infrastructure. So I know that this topic has come before council before, but for the benefit of the public, I will just briefly go through some background on the project. But this is the topics we will be discussing. So as we know, a lot of the city's infrastructure is in need of a lot of TLC, obviously with the streets, but also with our buildings and our equipment in our buildings. We've attempted over the years to upgrade our facilities, as shown on the screen, but due to the fiscal limitations the city is under right now, staff looked at creative ways of trying to update our infrastructure. And one of the ways is an Energy Services Performance Contract, in ESPC. So an ESPC is allowed. It's a design-build project in accordance with government codes. And basically, what you do is you look to provide multiple projects, you bundle them together. And when you put all these together and implement them as one big overall project, you end up with energy savings that can allow you to upgrade your older facilities and provide newer infrastructure equipment. An ESPC is typically developed and implemented by an energy service company, an ESCO. An ESPC is typically developed and implemented by an energy service company, an ESCO, and in this case, the city is working with Naresco to do that. So the main goal of an ESPC is really your cost savings, and the best way to show that is in the pie charts to the right. You see at the top, it's before, you've got a lot of energy use, energy demand, and you've also got maintenance costs because the equipment's old and needs a little TLC. Whereas if you implement a project, your utility savings dramatically decrease, your maintenance needs go down, and you're able to recapture those savings that you would otherwise pay for. The first step in this project is what's called an investment-grade audit, an IGA. And back in March, as I mentioned, this was brought to city council, and Naresco was awarded a contract at no cost to the city to complete the IGA. What happened there is Naresco then did a pretty deep dive into all our energy costs throughout our buildings, looked at all our sites, our equipment, reviewed all our maintenance needs, and did a lot of talking to the city maintenance staff. Very importantly, they also presented to INRAC, and next slide, and to those two meetings for INRAC, June and July. And the intent here was to provide status of their IGA research, but also to get feedback, comments, suggestions, and recommendations from the committee. As a result, you can see the project recommendations that INRAC recommended in the table. INRAC also wanted to include streetlight design, or a way of looking at our high-voltage streetlights, which is a major issue the city is trying to deal with. Naresco agreed to undertake that and include it as part of the IGA that they were working through. Okay, so these are the projects that went to bidding as part of the IGA. Okay. As a result, they came up with four bundles, the energy conservation measures, the four little projects. So there's a lot of lighting upgrades throughout the city, construction of renewable energy and EV charging, then you get into the mechanicals in our buildings, and then also the plumbing in our buildings. Next slide. I'm not going to go into details here, but this shows the locations and the facilities will be improved. The facility shown on the left and the associated ECM shown on the right. This slide has 14 buildings. This slide has nine buildings, so the total of 23 buildings will be improved in one way or another. Next slide on the left shows the parks that will be improved, there's 28 of those, and then our parking lots and parking structures, seven of those. Next slide. So a little more detail of each ECM. So ECM one, one I want to point out here is the Edison-owned streetlight upgrades. The vast majority of streetlights in the city are owned by the city, but there are almost 600 that are owned by SCE. They're the ones you typically see on the wooden poles. SCE has initiated a recent program where the city can essentially request Edison to upgrade those lights to LEDs, and therefore, since Edison charges us a fixed fee every month, that fixed fee will come down, and we can recoup the savings. Other items are the, a lot of, almost 8,000 light upgrades, lighting controls. So we, you know, if a building is vacant, the lights don't stay on. And then, as requested by INRAC, the streetlighting high-voltage design. So we have a much better idea of what we're going to be in for, for the remaining high-voltage areas, and also allows us to be ready if funding becomes available. Next slide, please. Okay, ECM two, solar photovoltaic. I thought I could say that. So three locations, City Hall parking lot across the street, PD across the street, and then our water main plant on the south side of, actually in Anaheim, south side of the 91. The ones at City Hall and PD are going to be very similar to the ones that we have existing over on the library, whereas the one at the water plant will actually be ground-mounted. Next slide, please. We'll be adding to the PV electric vehicle charging, accessible to the public at the City Hall, and we're adding additional EV charges to the SOCO parking structure over by the train station. Those are also available to the public. We'll be including EV charging at the police department. That allows us to, when we replace our city vehicles, to move towards use of electric vehicles. Next slide, please. Mechanicals, building mechanicals. City Hall and Library chiller. It's a fancy word for an AC unit. Not our typical, what you would think of a typical AC in a house, because of the style of the building and the size of the building, it's also known as a chiller. Staff will probably remember the last couple of years, in the height of summer, the chiller has gone down, makes it very uncomfortable to try and do any work, as anyone would know. So this one is obviously recommended for replacement, as there's been some expensive and emergency repairs needed. Next slide. We'll also be including any much more energy-efficient upgrades to reduce the energy consumption, controls, duct sealing, and addressing the pool pumps. Last one, next slide, please, is plumbing upgrades. So throughout the buildings and our restrooms and the parks, through a program through SoCal Gas, we can actually replace a lot of our faucets and water heaters to reduce our energy consumption. So let's talk some money. So this is Naresco's fixed-fee cost to implement all of the previously discussed ECMs. It is about $8.4 million. They have calculated a savings in the first year of a little over half a million dollars. We are recommending to staff to implement all of these ECMs as part of the project. Next slide. Now, the 8.4 is the cost to the contractor. As with any city projects, there are other additional costs and contingencies, as shown on the screen. I will talk about measurement and verification shortly. There is an allowance, which is another word for contingency, for the AC replacement, the chiller replacement, the City Hall and Library. That's only if we get pushed back. There are some unforeseen delays. We've got the consultant fee, staff time as usual, there's some city prep work, like trimming trees, some minor contingencies that we don't expect will be there, but we always want to have that handy, and then cost of issuance of financing, which I'll touch on later. So we're looking about $8.8 million. Next slide. So how does that work as an overall project? Well, when you push it out 25 years, if you see on the right side, there's a total expected savings at the bottom of about $14.1 million, is what the city expects to save, with a financing cost of around $11.5, which I'll explain a little bit later, which ends up giving a net positive cash flow over 25 years of right around $2 million. And also want to point out, there is a net positive cash flow each year up there, which drastically increases once the financing is paid off. Next slide, please. So as is typical for this type of project, there is a guarantee and a measurement and verification plan. Essentially, what that means is Naresco, as part of their IGA, went through and did a lot of detailed calculations and review of our energy needs, and they feel that they've calculated that we are going to get savings. As part of their project, we are recommending, at least for year one, they come back and double-check their calculations, which is industry-standard calculations, to make sure that we are realizing the savings we're supposed to be saving. If not, they write us a check. Next slide. So the benefits here, community and city taxpayers. Community's going to see a lot brighter, safer lights in the park, and obviously upgraded in our gymnasium, so anyone who's playing basketball can't really blame the lights for missing the jump shot anymore. Streetlight improvement plan, so we'll have final plans ready to go. If any sort of financing or funding or grant funding becomes available, we can hit the ground running. Our PV systems obviously help to meet our climate action plan. And being a design-build means the project moves a lot quicker than a typical city project. And as a taxpayer such as myself, this is a creative way to not increase the burden to taxpayers. It is a fixed-price contract and provides approximately $2 million in saving across the life of the project. Quickly on financing, so since the city doesn't have $8.8 million just in their back pocket, we will need to go out for financing. This is typical for this type of project. And the financing is structured in such a way that the savings that we will see every year is used to pay off the surface debt. In other words, there's no additional money coming out of the budget to pay for this project. Next one. Couple items we do want to consider, we went through and spent a lot of time looking at. With any project, there's pros and cons. There are, we feel are very minor, but just wanted to point these out to council. Financing rates are very favorable for the city right now. Any delays could potentially push those up. Unforeseen large-scale regional global impacts, we know all about that. Contingency should be very, very minor on this project. It is design-build. Naresco takes on vast majority of the unknowns. And any other factors, such as if there's a significant or a complete different change in how a facility is used, then the baseline is changed. But staff and we've looked through all this, we feel these are very minimal, and in minimal chance of this affecting the project. Next slide, please. So next steps. So today, we were asking the council to do findings, take public comment, and then approve the Energy Services Agreement with Naresco, which is recommending all of the ECMs that I just described. We were also asked that we can then pursue financing. We will come back at a future meeting in the very, very near future to finalize that financing, and then we can move quickly into construction and improvements. Next slide. So the recommendations are on the screen. The resolution includes all the ECMs as part of the project. Next slide. Before I get to questions, I will say that our chair and vice chair of INRAC are here, and they would like to make some comments, so if the council will oblige, I would like to bring up Chair Greg Seaborn.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, city manager and staff, and members of the public. I am Greg Seaborn, your Chair of the Infrastructure Advisory, Infrastructure and Natural Resources Advisory Committee, also known as INRAC, a licensed land surveyor, professor of the subject, and I have served the city in a variety of roles, from committee to council and appointed representative to regional bodies since about 2006. INRAC is the advisory body that you created to advise you on all things infrastructure and natural resources. We are nine volunteers who freely give our service to the city, and specifically to you, the council members. We are educators, engineers, business owners, doctors, executives, and passionate champions of both our infrastructure and our natural resources. INRAC has been looking at numerous ways to address our infrastructure budget shortfall. We've made recommendations to this council. The item before you, items, this specific items with the ECMs are among those. INRAC took a fairly deep dive into the proposed energy efficiency projects. We looked at necessity and savings. This will not fix our roads. This is not a silver bullet. However, these will save the city about $2 million, give or take, over the next couple of decades, as the efficiencies are increased and the projects are continued. Is it worth it? Well, I think you have to ask yourself what the price is for not doing anything, in terms of our next generation and the environment and the lack of maintenance. Much like our roads, we can't ignore it. We need to move forward with these maintenance obligations, maintaining our buildings and our systems, and we believe that this will get us there. It's a right step in the right direction. So thank you, and good luck tonight.
Are there any questions of former Mayor Greg Seaborn? Sure.
I did have a question for the chair. Sir, the lifespan of this project is 25 years. Did they explain to you how long the projects would take? It's a lot of ECMs. It's a numerous amount, sir.
It is, and they did explain it. It is a long process. It doesn't happen very quickly. The construction does start fairly quickly, and it goes through several phases. And so you will see a lot of changes very quickly and see savings right out of the gate. What needs to happen, though, is you have to look at all of these over that lifespan and start working at them. And after 25 years, you probably have to start over again, as you do with any sort of infrastructure, right?
Well, as the Chair of INRAC, sir, I count on you to, we need this comprehensive plan to update our aging infrastructure, I suppose, and the faster we can get these projects realized, the faster we start saving money to our general fund, so I implore you to move things along. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Before we open the public hearing, I have one question. When you talk about over $2 million savings over two decades, it's a little bit elusive in terms of exactly what we mean there. Would those be in constant $20, $21?
You know what? I'd have to turn back to staff for an answer on that.
Because I assume over a couple decades, we will have some inflation erosion here.
It's 25-year life cycle for the projects to be rolled out, but it's a couple of million...
Yeah, there was no factor included in that, but the numbers are conservative, so I would still feel comfortable that it's, even with, you know, inflation doesn't go nuts on us, you would still be around that because we got the silver numbers.
Okay, that helps me at least to understand a little bit. I understand there's a little bit over an 18-year payback, right? Is that what we're looking at still?
Financing is assumed at this point to be 18 years, but depending on the rate you get, it can be a few years depending on the rate.
All right, thank you.
And the city has done some refinancing before. It's not uncommon, so I would imagine that as rates change, the city will probably take advantage of that.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting comment, because in the meetings with Naresco, I believe they, you know, I said, hey, it's 18 years average, and they said, well, actually, that's a little below average. Usually, let's say it's in like the 14-year range, something to that effect. So the one thing I did want to clarify, 25-year lifeline of the improvements or upgrades, so, I mean, essentially then, depending on what happens with financing, you know, we're probably going to be able to go, after this is paid off, another seven years without having to make any of these, you know, investments, at least in the same equipment, correct?
Right. That's the idea. And with all of the equipment, I mean, think about your air conditioner, you know, how long does it last before it needs to be completely replaced? Now, the equipment we're talking about's industrial in nature, so it is meant to be serviced and not just, you know, tossed aside and made disposable. So there is some advantages there in having that sort of equipment installed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I could turn it over to my vice chair, I believe he's got a couple of comments, too?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, council, staff, and members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I just want to reiterate, you know, we have maintained a commitment to our infrastructure, but we need to fund that. And so this is an example of a creative approach to do that. The INRAC committee has spent substantial time reviewing this and feels confident that this is a good approach as that next step to address some critical infrastructure needs and to do that in a creative way, so that it, in the long term, provides us, well, not, well, over the short term, will provide us with savings that will assist us and hopefully give us an opportunity to invest further into our infrastructure needs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if you have any other questions, Naresco, representative from Naresco is here.
It doesn't appear as though there are. At the moment, we would probably hear from the public, and we may have some follow-up questions.
Hang tight.
So with that, I will open the public hearing and invite public comments. Yes?
Good evening, Jose Trinada Castaneda. So I really love that this is an innovative approach with design-build that's going to move fairly quickly, since there's a general consensus that sometimes private sector's able to move faster on projects like these. And, you know, the biggest thing that pops out to me from this is that this comes at no additional cost to taxpayers. This is a just prime example of, you know, no more deferred maintenance or upgrades that would cost us even more money if we were to allow for a lot of these projects to just fail as they are now. So, you know, if we're going to pay, if the city is going to pay a municipal fund for electricity and water, we might as well use a trusted firm to help bring those costs downs with energy and water efficiency upgrades. The lighting, making us a smart city, that's huge. The lighting, making us a smart city, that's huge. Like, for us to be able to go out in Orange County and say, we are making strides to become a smart city with smart city lighting, brighter and safer lights. This has been a major point of discussion amongst neighborhoods, especially in Richmond community. The solar at City Hall, you're going to make a lot of people, just a lot of people happy with, you know, solar panels finally at City Hall. It's like, it's something that we have been wanting for a long time, as well as the EV charging, the HVAC upgrades. So imagine if City Hall or the library didn't have AC today when temperatures reached like 100 degrees. Impossible to wear a suit in a building with no AC. So, last thing is the plumbing. Just the, we know from reports and discussions happening at OCWD and the Metropolitan that water is becoming more scarce. So now more than ever, we have to save every drop with these upgrades. And there's just so many benefits that have been already, that have been listed in the presentation and I'm sure will come forward. I, I think that the financing with a tax-exempt lease purchase with competitive, competitive rates, if you vote to approve the Naresco contract unanimously tonight, is a very good idea, again, for no additional cost to taxpayers. And, you know, I'll just, I'll just wrap it up with this. Like, I made my point, vote unanimously to approve this project tonight. It's a really good investment, and we won't be deferring key upgrades that we need to function as a city. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Jenny Matty, just had some questions to address to the council in regards to who will be, who will be, what jobs will be created because of this, you know, upgrades that we have? And will these jobs be in contract with this private organization, or will it be a city thing? And then will these jobs that are being created be union jobs? Will they be good-paying jobs? Or will they just be contracted jobs? So just something to think about.
Seeing no further comments.
I have nothing, no hands raised in Zoom.
Then perhaps we can ask whether that last question could be answered?
Might need a little backup here from, from my memory. Naresco went out and bid the project locally, and I believe the vast majority of the firms that responded were union. So I don't know exactly where everyone is coming from, but it is intended to be local, and all the contracts will be through Naresco.
And I think I should probably close the public hearing, bring the matter back to council, and we can certainly hear from, so the public hearing is closed. And please, we'll hear from the representative here.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ryan Gunstream with Naresco. Just to answer the question that was posed earlier, we believe that there's going to be an estimated 50 jobs that will be created through this project. Over 95% of the project will be done with local union labor, and so I hope that answers the question.
Thank you for that input. Now, the item is back at the council. Are there any, I know, Councilmember Zara, I was checking in with city clerk. I, I don't want to ignore if you want to provide input. So if you're ready at this stage.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I was heard or not.
I missed it.
We can hear you. If you could speak a little louder, you're a little quiet in chambers.
All right, I'm going to try without having to strain my voice. But my question, I, I just had a question on the, the charging, EV charging. I know Southern California Edison has a program on EV charging. Is, is this any, is this similar? What are the differences between what Naresco will be doing on this versus Southern California Edison's program?
Yes, did, were you able to hear that question?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for the question. Yes, you are correct. So we are intending to work with SoCalison on their charge-ready program. They provide the infrastructure from the utility feed up through the disconnect of the charger. And then we basically install the infrastructure from where the disconnect of the charger is to where the charger location is, and then provide and install the electric vehicle chargers. So they sort of do their half on the utility side through the charge-ready program, cover those costs. We work with them to coordinate the installation of that equipment, and then we sort of put our installation in and connect the wires, and we're ready to go.
Appreciate that, thank you. I, I think this is a great program. I want to thank our staff, Meg McWade and David Grant, and all the staff who have been working on this for, I know, for a couple of years now, almost. And, and to see this all come to fruition, I think it's just fantastic. So thank you all. That's all I have to say on this, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any comments from council members?
I'd move the item, actually.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap, seconded by Councilmember Silva. Oh, I thought you were adding to that.
I was going to move it, but.
I guess we will call for the roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
We are at our regular business items now. Item number two, redistrict Fullerton, redistricting advisory commission formation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a presentation here, then probably run back to my seat so I can push some more buttons to move this meeting along. I'm Lucinda Williams, I'm your city clerk. I'm back again to talk redistricting, and hopefully by next April, everybody will be tired of hearing me talk about redistricting, because I will be in front of you many times between now and then. But tonight's presentation will focus on forming a redistricting advisory committee. Next slide, please. At your last meeting, we reviewed an extremely brief overview of the redistricting process. So to recap that very quickly, legislative bodies with voting districts, which City Council, your City of Fullerton has, must undergo the redistricting process following each federal census. The government has released its census data, and we should have the final numbers adjusted for prison population from the state any day now. The state law requires the legislative body, or whatever hearing body is doing the redistricting, to have four public hearings. The legislative body must select a final map by April 17th, 2022. And as you recall, at your last meeting on August 17th, your last regular meeting on August 17th, City Council selected to go with a redistricting advisory commission option. Next slide, please. You can find most of the regulations pertaining to redistricting commissions, starting with Elections Code 2300 and a whole lot of sections thereafter. An advisory commission can conduct the pre-maps hearings for City Council and recommend a certain number of maps to the council to consider at that point. Then the City Council will take over and conduct at least two public hearings to consider the final map and the map adoption. The usual regulations that apply to legislative bodies, the Brown Act, the Public Records Act, all the things that keep a city clerk awake at night sometimes and definitely employed will imply, apply to those, that commission. On the next slide, please. Now, here are some things we need to iron out before we can officially form the, the RAC, the Redistricting Advisory Committee. We need council to determine the manner of appointment. The state code, the members must be residents of the legislative bodies, so Fullerton residents. The, also in the state code, it says the members cannot be elected city officials or city official families, paid staff members or paid campaign staff members of an elected official. And then council has several options, if they like, that they can add in addition to the state regulations for the membership, either regarding in-service restrictions or post-service restrictions. I can give you some examples from the other commission options. They, let me find the right page here. Some of the in-service restrictions include people who have not served a paid campaign consultants to the City Council, not been a member of a central party committee or consultant to the, the central party committee, a consultant who's contracted with the City Council, someone who's been registered to lobby with the city. The city doesn't have a lobbyist registry, so that part's kind of easy. There are also restrictions that you could consider on contributions to campaigns for candidates or council candidates. And some other options for restrictions could include you can't endorse, work for, volunteer for, or make a campaign contribution to a candidate while serving on the commission. I keep wanting to say committee, so if I accidentally say committee, I mean commission. That one's not sticking in my head. Some options for post-service prohibitions include, I'll just read you the list abbreviated of what the, the restrictions are for some of the other formats of a commission as examples. For five years, commencing from the date of appointment, a commission member cannot be a candidate for elective city office. For four years from the date of the appointment, a candidate cannot accept employment as a staff member or consultant to an elected official or a candidate for office, receive a non-competitively bid contract with the city, register as a lobbyist, and for two years, they cannot accept an appointment to an office of the city. So you can choose to add more restrictions or leave it as is if you like with an advisory committee. And we also recommend that the committee members file a conflict of interest form, which is the Form 700. Next slide, please. This is, that's not too hard to read from the back of the room, I hope, but it's in the agenda packet if it is. This is the timeline that we propose for the redistricting process. We're asking council to make commission appointments after you give us direction on the composition of the committee, sorry, commission, on October 5th. And then the, starting October 26th, the advisory commission will basically be here all the time between then and February or so, with several workshops. We'll do some background training on the process and the Brown Act, things that the commissioners will need to know. We'll do two public hearings in December and January. And then, next slide, please. At that point in February, the recommended maps will go to City Council for consideration. And once City Council decides on what appears to be their final map selection and the election sequencing, which is who gets elected when, what districts go in what election years, we'll turn it back over to the commission for a couple of workshops for final input, and then City Council will formally adopt the final map. All this has to be done by Sunday, April 17th. So back that up to whoever council meeting is before that. And then your city clerk and your registrar voters will gear up for the nomination period over the summer, and then Election Day for two of the council seats will be in November 2022. So on the next slide, please, is a recap of the things we are requesting from council tonight. Let us know the number of commission members you would like us to put on the commission, whether you'd like them appointed directly or at-large or a combination. In addition to the City of Fullerton residency requirement by the state, would you like to require a certain number of your members be representative of your council districts? Would you like an age requirement? Most of your other committee, all of your other committees are 18 and over, so we just want to clarify that, because the question inevitably comes up, because we have a lot of interest in Fullerton. And did you want to add any during-service or post-service restrictions following some of the examples I gave you on the other commission options? And then we'll embed all that in the resolution that you're adopting this evening. And if you could also approve the timeline, would you satisfy the Brown Act requirement for a formal meeting schedule for the commission? So that was a whole lot of information in very few slides, so hopefully it was easy enough to follow, and I can answer questions now, or we can go to public comments, and I'll run back to my seat for that, and I can answer more questions from my desk over there also.
There are a number of decisions to be made by council, so are you intending to help walk us through each one of those?
I can do that, sorry. Wanted to make sure we had Councilmember Zara back here, so we could hear him if he has any comments. Yes, I'm happy to walk you through those if you like.
Once we hear from the public.
Yes, maybe do that, and then I'll walk you through each of these bullet points. I can put that slide back up if we need to and walk through those.
And any other questions or comments by council? Nope? Okay.
Okay. Let me hop on over to my other seat, and we can do public comment.
We will request public comments on this item at this time. Anyone wishing to address the council, please come forward.
And you've probably heard me say this already tonight, but whoever's at the mic can start, and the rest of you, would you please line up so we can keep the meeting moving along?
Can I start? Please. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jonathan Paik, and I'm the Executive Director of the Orange County Civic Engagement Table, an API Latinx Labor Environmental Justice Alliance that is building progressive transformation in the region. I was a resident of Fullerton for 32 years in District 1. I'm a proud graduate of Sonora High School, son of a public school teacher, and I was also one of the two California Voting Rights Act plaintiffs to advance district-based elections in the City of Fullerton. I'm here to share my support to advance an independent redistricting commission in the City of Fullerton that will ensure transparency, fairness, and public confidence in the redistricting process. We know that how city council districts are drawn shape the amount of attention our communities receive from legislators, legislators at all levels of government. In January of this year, OSAT helps establish the People's Redistricting Alliance, a coalition of over 15 community-based organizations and residents whose goal is to center low-income communities of color and working families in local redistricting processes across the county. In 2015, I was part of a multiracial coalition that advanced district-based elections under the California Voting Rights Act, understanding that because of the at-large system, neighborhoods across Fullerton were failing to be represented at City Council. After over a year of community meetings, mapping feedback, and sharing our lived experience and testimony, we had finally arrived at a map where all neighborhoods could be represented across the city alongside a city contracted demographer. However, we saw that the decision around map drawing was taken out of the hands of communities, where the City Council decided to split many of the community-drawn districts to include parts of downtown Fullerton, leaving our communities unsatisfied, upset, and hurt. As a lifelong resident here in Fullerton, I was proud of the campaign to advocate for district-based elections. Many community members in my district had come into the City Council chambers for the first time, testifying and sharing their experience of what it meant to be a Korean-American living here in the City of Fullerton. I felt proud that we were able to break the barriers from my neighbors to feel welcome to express their experiences of how lines can and should be drawn. I was proud that they were able to do that side by side with other neighbors from all across the city. I was incredibly hurt by the fact that the City Council decided to adopt another map, in turn silencing their voices. That is why we believe that an independent redistricting commission will give communities the best opportunities to share their experience and ensure a fair redistricting process. Through phone calls, door-to-door canvassing, and other communication, our partners across our organization work to build relationships with community members on the ground and talk about issues that are most pressing for us. Last year alone, our partners talked to over 100,000 people of color across Orange County and about issues that mattered to them, including access to public services, the census, the 2020 elections, which will greatly inform the communities of interest that, in which redistricting lines can and should be drawn. That is why we can speak with great confidence that Fullerton can and should advance an independent redistricting commission. As we've entrusted the City Council in their roles and positions they hold today, we ask that the City Council entrust the community to allow us to have the final say. Thank you.
Hi, Kitty Hadamio, District 4, lifelong resident of Fullerton. As one of the original plaintiffs of the CVRA in 2015, it is my hope that this process is community-based and not simply a council appointment of an advisory committee. It is also my hope that this council do the right, do right by the residents of all races so we can take pride this time around in the maps that are drawn and hopefully approved by you. Please don't repeat the divisive boundaries that were previous, that the previous City Council created. We must do better this time around, and that is why it is my hope again that we select an independent redistricting commission. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening, council. My name is Jane Rans. I was one of the people who worked in support of district elections, but then opposed the ballot measure because of the division that the map that the previous council had proposed. I understand that the new AB 849 that was adopted in 2019 has provided a remedy for that, that doesn't allow that kind of gerrymandering to occur again. So I do look forward to this being a much more successful process and a much more fair process. Looking at the map that's included here, I see a couple of, sorry, map, excuse me, the chart of the upcoming meetings. I know that doesn't seem to be one of the decision items, but it's included in the staff report and in the presentation, and so I wanted to bring up my concerns here. AB 849 changed or has provisions in here for the public hearings and the status of the map at the time of the public hearings. It explicitly states in 21607.1A for the four public hearings that one public hearing is before, there's a draft map, and at least two public hearings after the council has drawn a draft map or maps. The wording here, I'm seeing that there's a draft map in the first public hearing, and then I'm seeing that the word "final map" being used for the third public hearing, where I believe that needs to still be in a draft phase. I know it sounds like I'm being picky, but I did promise my representative on the city council that I was going to hold the council to, adhering to AB 849. Thank you.
Good evening again, council. Jose Trinidad Castaneda. Ultimately, what I want to see come out of this redistricting process is an equitably drawn, fair map that ensures residents have a truly representative voice. So, you know, in keeping in line with the previous public comments, and I'm sure many public comments to follow, we need to make sure that the council adopts the map that the advisory commission that you've set up in the last council resolution creates, meaning you have to take your hands off the wheel, so to speak. That's just really the only way that community members who have been here before, five, six years ago, in this same fight, are going to feel that it's okay to trust our local institutions again. And so whatever you can do to make sure that we're rebuilding trust in our community by ensuring a solid process where the council has their hands, your hands, off of the final map recommendations that are hopefully the most fair and equitably drawn maps that we can get, that's the way forward. We have plenty more public comments, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Miguel Alvarez, I'm a member of District 4. Just wanted to share, although we are moving forward with having a commission appointment from the council, I think it would be great to ensure that we have an equitable process that will take into account the residents of the area and ensure that we are not only direct appointing residents from your area, but to have a process that will appoint members of the community in an unbiased manner. The other way to also remove bias in the process as you are thinking about redistricting is to ensure that this commission have the final say in the drawing of the districts in Fullerton and ensuring that the members of the community can look at this as an independent body, where they are going to be able to have the opinions of the residents and are able to work with those commissioners. So thinking about two ways of eliminating bias. One is how we look at the appointments, not only just district-based, but also looking at those that are outside of that member's district and not having direct ties with that council member, and ensuring that the commission is the last approver of the map. So those are the two recommendations that I have in terms of helping eliminate bias, community involvement, and ensuring that we are taking account the needs of the residents of Fullerton. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Amina Mirza Kazi. I'm here tonight to specifically request you to reconsider the decision made back in August to adopt the advisory commission and to instead adopt what was also proposed, which is the official independent commission for the redistricting process. Just to let you know, there are a few key differences, as has been laid out. One is that with the advisory commission, the city council retains the ultimate authority to approve maps, whereas with the independent commission, the commission retains that ultimate authority to decide on which maps should be approved. The other key difference is that with the advisory commission, the city council approves and appoints the commissioners, whereas with the independent commission, there's actually a step between that, where the city council members would appoint a review panel, who would then appoint the advisory, excuse me, the independent commission. This reminds me of something that I learned during my political science studies many years ago. I studied a political theorist named Robert Dahl, and he was famous for saying that democracy is actually a theoretical utopia, and all of our world democracies that we know of are approximations of that ideal. And I see that here in this discussion played out very clearly. Is having the city council approve lines, is that part of democracy? Yes. Is having an advisory commission draw lines, is that a closer approximation to the democratic ideal? Yes. But is having a truly independent commission, which retains its own authority, the closest approximation of the democratic ideal of drawing district lines and having true citizen voices saying where they want the lines to be drawn? Yes. That is the closest ideal that we can get to tonight. It will improve transparency, fairness, and public confidence and trust in the system, just as we've trusted you and your roles, and you have a lot of business to carry out in getting our city back off of its feet over a very difficult year. Let us, the community, take this off of your hands so you don't get bogged down in what will be very difficult political discussions. I understand applications have already come in for the advisory commission, but it won't be very, it won't be difficult at all to shift easily to the independent commission as the processes are very, very similar in terms of citizen applications. The timeline of April 17th will still be met. There should be no concerns that this will delay us or that we won't get our district maps drawn. And lastly, I wanted to point out that the city council will still be involved. This will be a partnership with the independent commission because you will be appointing the review panel. This is not a vote of no confidence in the city council. This is our way of saying, this is how we believe we can best work together to move our city forward with appropriate maps.
Good evening. I'm. Gracias. Buenas tardes, honorable alcalde y miembros del consilio y presentes. My name is. Good evening to the honorable mayor and the members of the city council and the public. My nombre es Analeti Hernandez, miembro de Oco Pico y residente de aquí de Fullerton. My name is Analeti Hernandez, and I'm a member of Oco Pico and a resident here of Fullerton. ¿Qué tan mal puede ser permitir que los concejales decidan los distritos? How bad could it be to allow the council members to select the districts? Ya tenemos un antecedente de lo que ocurre cuando los concejales deciden los distritos. Do we already have an antecedent of what happens when the council members decide the districts? En el año 2016, la ciudad de Fullerton se vio obligado a cambiar un sistema de voto generalizado a large. In 2016, Fullerton saw herself to be obligated to change the generalized voting system. A un sistema de distritos que no tuvo ningún beneficio. To a district-based voting system that did not have any benefit. Los concejales terminan trazando distritos con formas exageradas. The council members end up drawing lines of exaggerated council districts. Para maximizar la ventaja de un candidato sobre otro. To maximize the advantage of one candidate over another. Este fenómeno se le conoce como gerrymandering. This phenomenon is known as gerrymandering. Tenemos muchos temas pendientes que la comunidad necesita. We have a lot of pending topics that the community needs. Como viviendas accesibles. Such as accessible housing. Reparo de infraestructura. Infrastructure repair. Y protección de trabajadores. And protection of workers. Cuando los distritos están balanceados. When the districts are balanced. Los políticos presentan atención más a las necesidades de la comunidad y los votantes. The politicians pay more attention to the needs of the community and the voters. Pero cuando los políticos logran asegurar reelección a través de distritos. But when the politicians are able to achieve reelection through the districts. Que avantajan algunos candidatos sobre otros. That gives certain candidates advantages over others. La comunidad y las necesidades de la comunidad sale perdiendo. The community and the needs of the community end up losing. Permitir que los concejales decidan sus propios distritos. Allowing the council members to decide their own districts. Constituye un conflicto de interés. It constitutes a conflict of interest. Porque están haciendo decisiones que los benefician directamente. Because they are making decisions that benefit themselves directly. Esto en sí es una conducta problemática. This in and of itself is a problematic conduct. Al formar una comisión independiente, tenemos varias ventajas. By forming an independent commission, we have several advantages. Como un proceso de participación comunitaria e inclusiva. As a community participatory process and inclusive process. En particular, podemos asegurar que comunidades que históricamente han sido excluidas. In particular, we can ensure that communities which have been historically excluded. También pueden participar en el proceso. Are also able to participate in the process. Elevar y respetar la diversidad cultural de la ciudad. To elevate and to respect the cultural diversity of the community. Un proceso transparente que asegura que las comunidades confíen en el proceso y los distritos propuestos. To have a transparent process which ensures that the community will trust in the process and in the district. Muchas gracias y que Dios les bendiga. Thank you so much, and may God bless you.
Hello, mayor and honorable council members. My name is Karen Alvarado, a lead organizer with Orange County Congregation Community Organization. We, alongside many of the folks here tonight, were part of the original efforts to write an affair redistricting here in Fullerton back in 2016. And before I go ahead and begin, I want to share with you all just something from my faith tradition. I was raised Catholic, and, you know, following the teachings of Pope Francis, he said, "Every man and every woman who has to take up the service of government must ask themselves two questions." First one being, "Do I love my people in order to serve them better?" And the second being, "Am I humble enough and do I listen to everybody, to diverse opinions in order to choose the best path?" If you don't ask those two questions, your governance will not be good. So I stand before you trying to, you know, really uplift the community voices by asking you to please consider an independent commission for this redistricting process. It really is the most equitable way to draw these lines that will allow representation for community members. It is an impartial way, right, to protect the integrity of the voices that have worked day in and day out for the benefit of our communities. So, you know, as others before me have spoken, and as I'm sure others will follow, this is really just about ensuring that there's an integrity and re-trust within the government body. So I stand here before you to really just highlight that one more time and ask for you to please consider an independent redistricting commission. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council. My name is Harry Longenbacher, and I've lived in Fullerton for 21 years. And I remember the last time that district lines were drawn, I wasn't involved in, but I remember it was quite a shock at the way the redistricting was resolved by the council. One council member's home was moved from one district into the other by simply extending a line over his own street. The lines in downtown Fullerton were drawn and quartered with four districts touching each other at Commonwealth and Harbor, effectively fragmenting the downtown district. Where I live, I'm 500 feet from Mr. Silva's district, I'm in Mr. Dunlap's district, and I'm less than half a mile from Mr. Jung's district. I am separated from my friends and neighbors nearby in similar neighborhoods. So I would like to see an independent redistricting commission handle this. With 140,000 people living in Fullerton, tens of thousands of households, a way to arrange them into five districts must be staggering. There must be millions of ways to draw the lines. It's like trying to put together a 10,000-piece jigsaw puzzle, and I don't think that can be resolved in council chambers. It's a lot harder than figuring out disputed water bills, which went on for quite a while a couple of meetings ago. This should be handed off to an independent commission that can make these decisions independently, scientifically, mathematically, according to state and federal laws of redistricting. I think that is the way to get, regaining public confidence in the process of redistricting.
Hi, city council members. My name is Susan. I was one of the four people who braved it out to 1:00 AM at the previous redistricting city council meeting. Fullerton 2015 to 2016 was the first time I got involved in local government participation. In the summer of 2016, I, along with 10 community members, walked the streets of Fullerton and door-knocked to the residents about our community map. We got over 600 residents to sign a support for our community map at that time. I even made a massive poster that was taller than the size of me, and it was displayed at the back of this meeting room. That summer, I sat in these council chambers, and I was disappointed. We had overwhelming community support, and yet the council did not choose our map. I'm here today to ask the city council to give the community the choice to choose our map. While I know that the city council is not the same as five years ago, I ask that you trust in the community through an independent commission, or whatever you want to call it, and trust in the community as we've entrusted you in your roles.
Sorry, I'm not used to. Can you hear me okay? Cool. So my name is Kayla Sato, and I'm the redistricting organizer for Orange County Environmental Justice. As indicated at the previous city council meeting, of which I also stayed up till 1:30, 2:30, I would be back, and here I am. Thank you for all of your time and consideration about how to move forward with redistricting and gathering community input in this process. I still believe. I still believe that an independent commission will be the most beneficial path forward for our community, as data from cities like Sunnyvale and Los Angeles show that an independent commission is the most powerful and effective way to engage community. Unfortunately, in previous fights, the city council moved forward with their own maps and overlooked all of their and the city demographers' recommendations in favor of their own political views. We don't want to be overlooked again and ignored again, and the independent commission has multiple added benefits. One, it will be less work for the city council, and they can focus on water bill, housing items, police brutality, and infrastructure. Two, it will encourage more community input instead of being betrayed like we were before. Three, this would allow for more co-governance structures as a result. Four, as we've entrusted the city council with your jobs, you'd be entrusting us to do the same and be aligned with the state redistricting process as it improves transparency, fairness, and public confidence. Five, the community would be responsible for drawing equitable, compliant, and just districts, taking any blame off of the council, as we would have the final vote on the process. Thank you very much for your time and hope that you support all of the community that is here and mobilized to speak in favor of an independent commission.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jeremy Santos. I grew up in the city of Fullerton.
Jeremy, can you get a little closer to the microphone, please?
Hello, can you hear me okay? Hi, I'm a resident of Fullerton, and I'm here to say that we need an independent redistricting commission consisting of community members and residents who redraw district lines. This fair and free process is what all Fullerton residents deserve. City councils should not have any approval authority in this process because if they redraw district lines, that would be committing a conflict of interest. Also, this is efficient for both Fullerton city council and city staff. This body was designed to address important issues for residents, not redrawing their own district lines. This will allow city council to prioritize local resident interests, such as housing and infrastructure. As such, the community should decide, and this would uplift and empower our voices. In contrast, a council-led process risks prioritizing partisan and special interests, especially if lines are unfavorable to their reelection. Currently, the redistricting process is unfavorable to local residents because city council is notorious for disregarding community-drawn maps. The status quo is unfavorable to democracy since council members can approve a gerrymandered map because they have the final say. The bottom line is that we need a city council that holds up to the principle of inclusive community engagement. This is inherent in democratic governance, and it would also include voices that are historically silenced. This is important because we should respect Fullerton's unique and rich cultural diversity and history. In conclusion, an independent redistricting process has positive, long-lasting implications for the residents of Fullerton. Please approve of an independent commission so that the residents can have the final say. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio. Gracias por permitirmme estar esta tarde aquí.
Good morning. My name is...
Alma Chavez.
Alma Chavez, and thank you for the privilege of being here this evening.
Estoy aquí esta tarde para hablar de los beneficios que traería tener una comisión de distritos.
I'm here to talk about the benefits that it would bring to have a commission for the districts.
Independiente, variada ventajas. Un proceso de participación comunitaria individual y particular podemos asegurar.
So having an independent commission would bring different advantages. Having an individual, in particular, committee made up of the community would be able to ensure...
Que comunidades históricas y sin exclusividad también puedan participar en el proceso.
That historical communities without exclusivity would be able to participate in the process.
Elevar el respeto y la diversidad cultural de la ciudad.
It would elevate the respect and the cultural diversity of the city.
Un proceso transparente que asegure la comunidad confianza en el proceso de los distritos.
It would be a transparent process which would ensure that the community would have trust in the process of the districting.
Qué tan malo puede ser permitir a los concejales de la ciudad los distritos durante el proceso de la comunidad puede comunicar lo que quieren los concejales.
How bad can it be to allow the council members to express what they want in regards to the districting?
Un grupo comunitario multicultural latino-asiático que medio año conversó como individual los distritos para presentarlas a las comunidades y proceso del mapa 2B.
A group that was multicultural, made up of Latinos and Asians, that met for half a year, trying to figure out the districting, they came up with a community map 2B.
En la cual habría garantizado los procesos de votación de la comunidad de los coreanos en el distrito 1.
And that... That would have guaranteed the voting rights of the Korean community in District 1.
Y la comunidad latina en el 4 y el 5.
And also of the Latino community in District 4 and 5.
Los concejales eligieron el mapa 8.
And the council members picked Map 8.
La cual dividió las comunidades coreanas y los intentos disminuyeron la influencia de los votos latinos en la comunidad.
And this divided the Korean community, and it also diminished the Latino vote in the community.
Cambiando a asegurar la relación de los concejales actuales, ambos mapas se pueden ver abajo. Solo les pido que pongan atención y nos ayuden a elegir el mapa que ayudaría a la comunidad. Muchas gracias.
I just asked for you to pay attention to us and to pick the map which would help the community. Thank you so much. As the interpreter, there was one phrase which wasn't clear before that. May I ask for that to be repeated, please? La frase antes de su última oración estaba diciendo algo en relación. Se puede repetir?
¿Cuál?
La penúltima frase.
Actualizamos mapas, pero estaba hablando de hace seis años que fueron elegidos los mapas que estábamos apoyando, el mapa 2B, y ellos eligieron otro mapa.
So I was talking about updating both maps from six years ago, which the map 2B was picked, but I'm talking about picking the right map.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Whitaker, members of the council. My name is Christopher Sanchez, long-life resident of Fullerton. I grew up off the streets of Brookhurst and Valencia, sometimes the forgotten part of Fullerton. So if you haven't gone there, I please ask you to come and visit our community. Echoing many of the comments by the residents, my fellow residents here, about an independent redistricting commission, which would really empower voters with a final say in a decision that would be critical for the next 10 years. I think that's really important to emphasize. There's no secret that, right now, the public doesn't really have confidence in the elected officials. And I'm not saying you, but just in general. And so I think that it's a really important step for this council to go above and beyond, to be the bigger city council and say, "We want to show confidence in our voters. We want to be transparent in the process, and we want to partner with you in democracy." And that's what an independent redistricting commission would do. And that's what we're asking for you, to empower the voters in this process and to let them have the final say. That way, there's not a corner store because someone happens to live right there, all of a sudden carved out in a district, and that's really important. So thank you for listening to all the comments from all the citizens and residents of Fullerton, and we know that you'll do the right thing.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you. Good evening, council members and mayor, I think Jess is here, Whitaker. My name is Jeanette Vázquez. I am a former elementary school teacher, 6th grade, in Orange County. I grew up here in Fullerton. I went to Richmond, Nicholas, one of our teachers from Nicholas, sitting here, and then Fullerton High School. And so, you know, I grew up here in Fullerton, and I saw all too often students from my community and my neighborhood, growing up on Orange Slurping Euclid in southwest Fullerton, just not making it, starting in 8th grade, right, teen pregnancies. High school, dropping out, drugs, gangs, going to juvenile hall, right? Unfortunately, only 8% of students of color from low-income communities like southwest Fullerton, like southeast Fullerton. And of course, there's always pockets too within the other areas, right? Unfortunately, only 8% of students of color from these communities graduate from college. And that is quite unfortunate because, in order to continue living here in Fullerton, really, you know, they really do need training to have jobs that are going to pay them the wages they need to live here. And so, you know, we've been fighting these issues for a long time. Our communities have been displaced for a long time now. We're tired. We're tired of having to move. I want to, you know, come back and live here. I don't live here right now. But I grew up here, and I want to come back and live here, and I'm going to come back and live here. I have other reasons why. But a lot of my friends and family members have been displaced because we are not doing our due diligence or maybe doing enough, you know, adopting policies that are going to keep us here. The Fullertonians that live here now, the kids that are being raised here right now, not in 20 years, not in 30 years, right? Right now, the residents of Fullerton now, how are we serving them? And so, you know, as a passport member with the Fullerton School District, I was selected because of the Voting Rights Act, right, to represent southeast Fullerton in the Latino community, specifically who had been disenfranchised, which is the reason why the city lost a lawsuit, right, in the first place. And so that was an honor for me to serve them. In the community, in the Fullerton School District, we have a process that we have had to abide by, that was adopted, I think, 2011, 2012, approved by Governor Brown in the legislature, which is a local control funding formula. Local control is a great, you know, it's a really great theme, and I hope that you entertain extending the time, like I would, you know.
Thank you for your comments.
Like to extend the time.
Your time is...
Okay, this is a very important issue, and I would hope that you would...
I can't grant anyone extra time.
Was it that three minutes?
You're already over time.
Wait, was that three minutes?
Please, please let the next speaker up.
Well, we need that. We definitely need the independent commission.
Good evening, Council. Egli Nuncy, a member of this wonderful city. Let me tell you that in 2020, we were approached by the census. And, you know, we were hit by the pandemic, and they were not outreach enough. And they came, you know, to community leaders to go and help the census to everybody to be counted. And that's why this city, this council, recognized the community leaders. And we were recognized city level, county level, state level, because we were far, you know, we were beyond. We were calling. We were telling people, each of our residents, that they need to participate because we're going to bring revenue. They're going to be invested in schools, in health. And most important, we're going to have representation. And we found people, they lost faith in the system, but for the first time, they participate in the census. And, you know, they stopped doing it over 32 years, living here in Fullerton. But they regained the trust because we told them that our council will always give them trust and transparency. And that's why we ask you to have an independent commission, because that will going to allow all of us to be represented and not the private interest of anyone. I know all of you have in your heart the best interest of all the residents of Fullerton. That's why you guys were elected, and we were trusted in your different district. But now we're asking you to do the right decision, to give the community and the city of Fullerton that well-deserved opportunity to have the district and get represented in each of the districts. I hope you do this because we're asking you respectfully. And I know you guys are going to hear us because you are good people, and that's why you guys were elected. Thank you so much.
That looks like all of the in-council chamber speakers. We do have four hands raised in Zoom. If you're ready to go to those.
Certainly.
Five. One just popped up. Tina, you are unmuted.
Hi, my name is Tina Dunn, and my husband and I are homeowners and residents in Fullerton. This is actually my first city council meeting, so thank you so much for having me here. The reason why I wanted to encourage an independent commission is because people like me, right, who haven't been able to be involved in, you know, civic engagement, just be involved with my own city, this really gives us the opportunity to do so. The commission brings us to a level where we can talk about maps that really affect who we are, and it also will also make partisan, less partisan district maps, which is what is encouraged, right? We really want unity in our community, and this is a way to do so. I think everyone else has really... I love your cat, by the way.
Okay, Tina, were you done? It looks like you're muted again. Okay, Tina, it looks like you are done, and we will go to the next speaker. Christine Lim. You should be able to unmute now.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, City Council. My name is Christine Lim. I'm a former Fullerton resident and actually a Cal State Fullerton alumni. And I'm speaking with you all today just to request that you appoint an independent redistricting commission. It's crucial that we center our community voices in this process and allow community members to be final decision-makers regarding a redistricting process that's going to impact them and their neighborhoods directly for the next 10 years. So essentially, short and sweet, we do need to work towards creating co-governance. We really need to ensure that we're working towards a community-led redistricting process. Thank you.
And Matt, you should be unmuted.
Hi there. Is this me? Okay.
Yes.
This is Matt Leslie. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zara, for voting in favor of an independent commission during the last meeting at 1:30 in the morning, when hardly anybody had an opportunity to participate, and the council decided to consider this item anyway. I would like to also advocate for what I did last time, which is the independent commission. I think the council are hopelessly conflicted in trying to put a map out. I'd like to point out that in the staff report itself, there's a provision for commissioners, you know, I assume for an advisory-only commission. is, you know, I assume for then advisory-only commission, stating that a possible provision saying that council, commission members may not run for elective office for positions using district boundaries adopted by the commission or city councils for five years following appointment to the commission. Why on earth would that not apply to the council itself? Of course, because it would be unworkable, but it points out that it's absurd to hold commission members to this standard while the council itself would not be held to the same standard. Last time, the process did not work well. There was supposedly a public process. The facilitator who held meetings with the public held at least one unadvertised meeting for, for constituent group. Well after the public process had closed, a bar owner from downtown walked in with a map that he supposedly drew, and, and put it before the council, and the council adopted it. There was a line drawn around one council member's neighborhood, as Mr. Logenbacher pointed out, that was Greg Seaborn's neighborhood, so he could be in one district and not another, and obvious bow to, to, you know, to his, keeping his seat safe. And then after that, a council member who's now our county supervisor refused to say that whether or not he knew that somebody in his family, namely his wife, was going to run for city council, based on those maps, and actually got up and left the room when he saw me getting up to ask that same question that I asked before. So it was a mess. I hope it works better this time, and I hope that you'll trust democracy and trust in an independent commission to go ahead and handle this, so that we don't end up with a terrible map that we, that we have now, a map that I'd like to point out, as I did last time, that is so bad that subsequent state law would not have even allowed its adoption. So thank you again, Mr. Zara. I hope you'll support independent commission this time. I hope some of your council, fellow council members will join you. Thank you.
And Jenny, you are unmuted and able to talk.
Hi there. My name is Jenny Sun. I'm the legal service director at Addy Center, a community-based organization. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of one of our community members, Pong Dok Cheng, and she's from Fullerton. She's actually spending time with her family right now, because it's Chusok. So I'm going to read her letter for you. Dear Fullerton Council, my name is Pong Dok Cheng. I'm a longtime Fullerton resident. I am 86 years old and currently living in low-income housing for seniors. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, senior citizens like myself have become more and more isolated and do not have access to resources and information. Even though I cannot be at the city council meeting in person due to health, I hope my letter will be considered by the council members. I write this letter to urge the Fullerton council members to adopt an independent redistricting commission. The beauty of American democracy is participation, and I believe that redistricting of Fullerton should be led by the people of Fullerton, independent of the council. As a resident, I believe my direct input will be better heard and considered by this independent commission and a diverse pool of Fullerton residents. I trust that our duly-elected council members will make the right decision today. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our last speaker with the hand up, it looks like it is M.L. You should be unmuted.
Hi, good evening, council. This is Manish calling. I would actually state that I think it's relatively important to go with what your staff has already recommended. When talking about accountability, it's obviously important. However, an independent unelected committee does not automatically equate to accountability. Tonight, we've heard a lot of repetitive words about trust, accountability, and fairness, all of which are extremely important. Three years ago, the city was forced into district-wide elections, or district elections, as opposed to citywide. The same arguments were used when the city was forced, again, by threat of a well-backed lawsuit brought by, brought forth by special interests. District elections in a city the size of Fullerton can often create divisiveness, as opposed to less divisiveness. We have only had the districts for a short while, so redistricting, at this point in itself, seems a little premature. As somebody formerly said earlier, there's a million ways to map the city. And if we continually redistrict the city, we're going to create additional and new inequities, lack of fairness, and lack of accountability, which will often have to be addressed through redistricting and additional redistricting and future redistricting. It's slightly insulting to say that our fairly recently-elected officials are not capable of appointing people that will be fair, inclusive, and accountable. No matter what district you live in, you can find things in other districts you would like to have. Case in point, downtown Fullerton. Some people would like to break it up into smaller districts, but under state law, that is impossible, is also illegal. Accountability is important. An independent unelected committee will not automatically equate to this sort of accountability that people are asking for. I strongly urge that we move forward as a city with what staff has recommended, with five members from each district appointed by our elected city council members. Thank you.
And that is all the hands we have raised in Zoom.
All right, with that, we'll bring the item back to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I decided to start off, because with some of the comments that were made, I was actually part of that 2010 redistricting endeavor that the state took when the voters of the state took away the, the redistricting of assembly seats, senate seats, and congressional seats from the legislators and put it to an independent commission. I was up in Sacramento advocating for that. I was down here in Fullerton. And for the most part, I think that commission did a good job of making the districts, the legislative districts, a little more balanced and fair, and, and took away some of the gerrymandering that was going on. Back in 2016, I was, I attended a lot of those meetings when, when we were doing the redistricting here in Fullerton, and, and I could say that some of the comments were correct. The public input and the sessions came up with a map that was, had the districts more compact, more unified, if you will. And I believe at the, one of the last council meetings, somebody walked in, and at that time, Mayor Fitzgerald advocated for a map that we currently have, that in essence, had these fingers snaking all into downtown Fullerton, so that every district touched downtown. And, and again, that was after we had gone through a process, various gatherings, and at the end of the day, it, it was a, a map that kept the status quo in essence, and it did allow for, for a couple of victories, you know. And, and prior to that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, prior to you being on council, I don't recall anyone from South Fullerton being on, on the city council prior to you. And, and I know there was a time in the mid 2010, 2012, where, other than Councilmember Whitaker, the other four lived within a mile radius up in north Fullerton. So that there was not equitable representation on the council. And with the districts that came about, I think, at least I can speak for myself, and, and the lady, Jeanette Vazquez, who happened to be one of my former students, got elected because of districts to the trustees. And I believe that the districts helped myself, Councilman Jung, and Councilman Zara to get elected. I ran at large in 2016, and I just made it. And part of that reason, and I'll just be frank, is because I knew and a lot of people in South Fullerton, mainly because I had been a teacher there for 16 years. So knocking on those doors in 2016, it was a lot of my parents, a lot of my kids, "Oh, Mr. Silva, what are you doing here? What are you knocking on my door for? I'm out of school," right? But, so that, that effort was there because of the districts. And, and moving down to 2018, well, back to 2016, when those maps were drawn, my current district, District 3, if you look at it, the east, the western border should run along upstate college. But during that meeting, when we were, when the council was deciding how to set up the districts, they literally, my District 3 went upstate college and then took a little turn, and then there was a cat-out for one of the other council members, so that he could be in, in that district versus another district. So there was a maneuvering there by council. And I think that's part of the reason with some of these residents' speakers don't trust the council because of what happened prior. And not that it influences a lot, but the same thing happened in Anaheim when those lines were drawn. And so, moving forward, I, I think it would be beneficial for us, and I know I voted to do an advisory committee, simply because I didn't think the will of the council would advocate for an independent committee. But now, listening to the residents, all Fullertonians, and, and moving forward, I would like to see us, and I think there's still time, if I'm not mistaken, to look at an independent committee. What does that look like compared to, to the advisory committee that we had asked for to bring forward? So with that, I mean, I would like to see if we can take another council meeting, and, and we still have time to maybe come back and have our Madam Clerk present, what does the structured timeline look of an independent restructuring committee versus what we have now, and maybe decide that on, on our next meeting, the 5th of October. From what I've been told, time is there. And, and I think we do need to get a ride, and, and we do need to, in essence, erase some of those memories that happened when we redistricted and we drew the current lines, because for some, those memories are still fresh. And my, my neighborhood, we have, I live on a street that the block does a lot together there. I mean, we have the sparkle balls at Christmas. We have, we closed on the streets and have a picnic for the July, all these activities. And because of maneuvering the districts and having these fingers snake to downtown, my block was cut in half. I, my district, literally, if that line had been drawn another 200 feet lower, I would have been in District 2, and you would have seen the lines, it would have been coming down Dorothy, right before it got to Hillcrest Park. It takes south, goes a block west, and then comes back north. And in essence, there's another little finger there. That was just to accommodate a previous council member being in his, in his own district versus keeping the lines a bit more compact, a bit more solid, and not a snakey. So with that, I like to see us come back and take a look at, at an independent district, and see what that will look like, and, and then, you know, have two, two things to compare it to with. So I would move that, since we still have time, and bring that back on October 5th.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, I just had one follow-up question, if I may, first.
Of course, sir.
Which is, I'm trying to understand a little bit what was wrong with those district boundaries, because you elected to run in that same district that you thought was ill-designed, and challenged an incumbent, and you prevailed.
No, and I lived there, and, and you're right. But what I'm saying is, the original districts, prior to them coming to council and council changing them, were a little more compact. They didn't snake into downtown, right? I mean, if you recall, I think it was Map 2A.
Right, but I think you were closer to a border there than, than the incumbent was.
Well, I still am, yeah. I mean, if, if they would have drew me down, I mean, I would have ran anyway. But I'm just saying that, that when, when the committee brought Map 2A to us, it was more compact, it didn't touch it downtown, and I was in that district. And then after that night was over, I was still in the district, right? And, but the lines and the gerrymandering had occurred. And, and that map was never discussed at any meeting, open session. It was, and I think you were on council, it was brought in at the last minute, and, and all of a sudden, we had a, a new, a new map that there hadn't been any discussion. And, and it really, I think, for some of the participants, me including, that were, that were participating in those discussions, it felt like, well, what happened?
But you were also elected at large before the districts, even prior to that.
Right.
So that's, yeah. I, I don't want to cut off Councilmember Jung, who wants to speak.
And, and I believe that you had given me a vote to move the line to straighten out my, my district, and then two weeks later, you came back and, and took it away.
We wound up having to compromise. I think Councilmember Seaborn and I actually were not in agreement with that map.
Right, but, all right.
Well, I think the important question needs to be asked of Madam City Clerk. It's, your duty bound to all of this. I hate to put you in a position where it's going to make your job more difficult, but can, can that timeline be accommodated in a reasonable manner?
If I reduce the amount of hours I sleep, you know, it can be accommodated, so. And I told you, you all get tired of hearing me talk about redistricting, so I will be living up to that promise.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's the end of the comments, at least.
I think it's Mr. Zara.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Zara.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and apologies for my cast earlier. But I think this whole household stands with having an independent commission. I think, I do want to make a point to the accountability issue, and I'm really appreciate Mr. Manash for bringing that up. Independent commission does not absolve them from accountability. They are sworn into this duty, and they have to report, just like any other council member, the, on their financials and, and so on. So, so there is a level of accountability. Also, the selection process that happens on an independent commission is rather thorough, and, and not just, you know, politically-appointed positions, as is, as would be the case in the advisory committee, or we still don't know what that would look like. But that would be the, the issue, issue on, just in the answer on that. I think that trust is important, and trust in democracy is important, and this is something that will stay with us for 10 years. And so, it's important that we do this carefully, so that a whole generation will potentially be affected by this on every level, socioeconomic levels. Our community is diverse in every aspect, including economically. You have a line, basically, the statistics from the school district is that 50% of our kids of elementary school are on or below poverty line. But if you look at where the, the distribution of this is, it's all South Fullerton. So it is absolutely important that something like this is given to the people to decide. Neighborhoods are affected in ways that we, as council members, cannot fully understand, because we all live in our own neighborhoods. So I think this is, this is beyond our abilities to, to make these judgments. I think this should, you know, and I'm glad Councilman Silva is, is making a change, having a change of heart. I think this is important, that we explore this option. And so, if, if there is no objection that we don't, that this council tonight does not make a decision, I know there's an item three on the recommendation, which is provide other direction, and maybe that would be to come back at the, at the next council meeting with the options for an independent commission.
So would you second my motion?
Yes, certainly.
Councilmember Zara, I hear what you're saying. I also hear what Councilman Silva is talking about, too. But I look back at the last decision by this council, and it was a three-to-two vote, and both, both of you are now going for a second bite at that apple. And I would like to at least retread my arguments of what was in favor of an advisory committee, as opposed to one that would determine. It would be most beneficial, in my opinion, to have more groups working on potential maps, things to be discussed, and that the council would have the entire panoply of ideas and suggestions and arguments on many more maps. Should we choose a so-called independent committee, which has authority, real authority, it would have the necessary element of narrowing down what we would be looking at. And we wouldn't have the advantage, as, as you're arguing, to have all the voices in the city be recognized. We, it would be an automatic narrowing down in the process, where we would have fewer choices, many fewer choices. And so, I still see a clear advantage to allowing the council to have a choice of, among many proposals, as opposed to allowing it to be narrowed down to where we have a typical choice, like even on a council agenda of, of one thing or another, and, and that's about it. So that would be my concern.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure. Councilmember Jung.
I address a couple of points. One, this notion that somehow we're... One, this notion that somehow we're not intelligent enough to figure out district maps, or read a census data, read numbers on paper, draw lines on paper, is personally offensive to me, and to those that voted on my behalf to elect me here. So that's one. Second point, would, again, this notion of class warfare, pitting north side to south side, again. I don't know that it's very productive to say that there's no poor people in the north. There are plenty of working, poor people, I know, that live there. I was one, and my family was one. Just because they're able to afford to live there, you don't know how they got there. They could be spending 70% of their income to rent a home there. So these things are diluting this discussion, adding things that make no sense to what we're trying to do here, which I think most of all of us would agree, and certainly I do, speaking for myself, that the map currently as it is is flawed, and that it requires a revision, which is what a census is for. How we get there, I think, we defer slightly. But overall, I think we all agree that making sure that the data's used, that the community input, and the community is heard, and that the map that they ultimately decide on is something that we adopt, I certainly would support. But I don't know that the discussion gets any better by pitting one community against the other, or saying that we're too dumb to figure it out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure, Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, just to address a couple of points. I didn't hear them saying that we were not intelligent enough, or dumb, so I guess we have different takes on there. And you're right, Mr. Jung, the current map needs to be fixed, but it was decided by the council, the final decision was by a council. And, you know, the poverty warfare, it's true. I mean, that was the reason that the CVR came into place, because disadvantaged communities, communities of lower socioeconomic incomes were not being represented on a lot of governing boards. So that's been there. You can trace this, you know, racial warfare, socioeconomic warfare, all the way down to when in Fullerton, if you were a person of color, you could not live north of Valencia or west of Lemon. You could not live in those areas. You had to stay east of Lemon, south of Valencia. There was a person, Mr. Bernal, whose family still lives here, who took it on his own to move west of Lemon, and had his house empty, and was harassed and almost forced to move out, but he's held his ground until finally, the Supreme Court said, no, this type of behavior, and the names list my mind, my goodness, restricted covenants are not legal. So that's been there, and it's the reason that we drew these lines to begin with, to acknowledge and see that there are differences in communities, that there are needs in some communities that are in others. And I agree with you, there are similar needs in all communities, but some communities, some districts, need a little more than others. And I think having, you know, there's time available, so having a presentation to see what, how do we compare, you know, the two systems, the two processes? I think that would be valuable to us. And I believe at the last meeting, the vote was 4 to 1, because I remember voting for an advisory committee. And now, seeing, learning more about the independent commissions, seeing the audience here speaking, I am willing and I want to see what does an independent redistricting commission look like, and can we move forward with that? So the council, you know, somebody mentioned you need to keep your hands off, who was advocating for an advisory committee. Well, our hands will never be off if there's an advisory committee, because we have the last vote. And so, you know, moving to an advisory committee, council's hands would be on the decision of what districts to select. So with that, again, I would hope that we can come back in two weeks and get another presentation.
Councilmember, I stand corrected. I do recall now that your vote did go with the majority. However, your arguments and your lean were against it up to that point.
Right.
And so, that's why my failed recollection of this. But I do want to point out that we could have numerous meetings. I know the city clerk would look forward to that. Numerous meetings where we line up pressure groups to come and just take very large amounts of time through the council meeting and block the rest of the agenda. And we could do that, meeting after meeting, for as long as we could tolerate that. I appreciate yours and Councilmember Zara's tenacity on this. But once in a while, when a vote is made, the vote has been made, and it's time to move on to filling out the rest of the decisions that we need to make. We have a number of them to do now. We have a very large agenda still ahead of us, but we could talk for a very long time on this. And I agree with what Councilmember Jung said. It seems like we only create more divisiveness, because I'll point out that people below the poverty level come in all colors, all races, all genders. And so, to try to use a group and say that they're all of one class or another, that's just patently false.
Yeah, no, and you're right. They come in all colors, but I think in Fullerton, predominantly of those are in South Fullerton. And so, I guess, any public comment, people that come up here now, we will refer to them as pressure groups. When we come and have residents come speak with us, we will notify them, they are pressure groups, and we should not limit them. I mean, that seems kind of awkward, that you would say that, who's been an advocate for public comments, for openness, openness, and having, you know, people express their opinion.
Yeah, no, I always invite that. But you're telling me there aren't organized efforts of this sort, and I think that that's pretty apparent.
There was an organized effort back when those maps were drawn, and I don't recall you using those words when the map was drawn.
No, I really don't want to delve into divisiveness. That's why I certainly invite all the best ideas from the public, as relates to redistricting properly.
You know, I believe that there's a motion on the table. I'd actually like to make a substitute motion to approve this item as drafted or as presented by staff. The only comments I want to make, you know, sometimes in local government, there's a tendency to, I think, put partisanship above practicality. But I think the reasons we're here, when you really break it down, you know, we've got to be practical about this stuff, and discount and disregard any kind of partisanship that might be brought into this. You know, of course, we're going to have our own values based on whatever our leanings might be, but the reality is, we have to do what we believe is best for the city. And in this case, I think it's truly going with the item that's been brought forward. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve, you know, the plan as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, well, prior to that, I will second that motion for a substitute.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I don't know if you can hear me? So I just wanted to just mention something. When we talk about economic diversity in our city, low income versus middle versus higher income, this is all part of the census data.
Pardon just a second. Is there any way of increasing the volume on?
Not without getting a lot of feedback, so Councilmember, if you would mind.
I will try to be as close as I can to my mic.
We'll try not to look up your notes too much while you're leaning in.
Okay. When the census data comes in, the census also looks at economic diversity in each jurisdiction. So when we talk about economic diversity and disparities in our city, it is not to create divisiveness, it is to state the facts of our city, and the importance of having the census data be reflected in the redistricting process, based on those data and those facts. So it is part and parcel of this discussion.
I understand all that, Councilmember.
Well, let me just conclude, if I may. And I think that on the issue of partisanship, there is, this is, again, the city council is a political body, and it is very partisan. I mean, I know we are supposed to be nonpartisan, but we do have our affiliations. And so, I think it is a wrong decision, in my opinion, to give this type of task to a partisan body. And it is not that we lack intelligence, I'm sure we're all intelligent in our own ways, it is just because this is not the type of work that we, I believe, should be doing. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, Madam Clerk, I guess we're finished discussing here, so we'll take a roll vote.
Yes, and we'll start with the substitute motion, which is the recommendation as presented. And if this passes, then we can go back and fill in the blanks on the resolution, but let's see if we're going to go in that direction first, if that's okay.
We can work till tomorrow morning on this, if needed.
We could. Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
No.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
So motion passes 3 to 2. So we will be going with an advisory commission, I wanted to say committee again. Now, with your permission, I will walk you through the details, so we can fill in the blanks.
Sure.
And if anybody wants to start, I'll put in a plug right now, wants to start filling in their applications, they'll be due October 4th. They are on the city clerk's website at cityoffullerton.com. So we'll make it more prominent on the website, too.
Let me make it real clear with respect to where we are now. The council has acted to go forward with the advisory commission. We'll now be filling in some details regarding what that advisory commission's responsibility and how it will be created. All five of you are able, and should, participate in that process. The mere fact you did not vote for the formation issue does not preclude you from discussing the elements of the formation itself.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with the number of commission members.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Silva, I'd like to lead off with someone else, just for variety here. Councilmember Jung, do you have anything to add?
At the prior meeting, we spoke about five directly appointed from each council member, so there's accountability to that elected official.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Silva.
Yeah, no, I agree with the five, but I would also like maybe to increase it to nine, to have five, you know, appointed by us, right? And maybe four at-large, so we can have a wider audience, a wider group for a little more input. So I would ask for that, to have four at-large selected by the committee members to join the advisory commission.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zara?
I would agree with Councilman Silva, that it should be at least nine, more than just five directly, because otherwise, I mean, they're answering to us, as it has been stated, accountable to the appointed council member. So I think we need additional members that maybe are at-large, but also that are represented equally in the city, so there's no, you know, tipping towards one district or the other, somehow.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate that comment. My concern is that with at-large selection, because of Brown Act requirements, it necessarily leans in the direction of just two council members having a large amount of sway over those at-large appointments. It's hard for me to see a way around that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think maybe we can devise a better selection process that is a little bit more fair or balanced in this case, so.
We haven't heard from Mayor Protem yet, yes.
I'm okay with adding, I think, if there's a direct appointment for each council member, and perhaps, you know, the commissions, like, you know, planning on some of the others used to be seven. You know, I think, look, that way, the meetings can be held here, they can be held elsewhere, not too difficult to accommodate. I think that's a good-sized group. You know, five directly appointed, two at-large, I'd be willing to support that.
And can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
On your comment about the Brown Act, and then I, can you just, it went over me, so can you elaborate on that, just so I understand?
Well, in most cases, even with commissions and committees and everything, we're able to interview, not as a majority of the body, but a subcommittee of only two of us. Typically, that falls to the mayor and one other, whomever of the council. So that selection process, where you're interviewing people typically, is limited predominantly to those two. And so, therefore, recommendations are made, and certain council members are disadvantaged. Even though I might have an advantage in that, I'm pointing out the obvious flaw in that.
Got, okay, got it. All right, so I guess, well, I don't know if there's a vote for nine, but a vote for seven, or a point, because maybe we could, if we went with nine, is there a way to devise a plan where we're a little more equitable, as Councilmember Zara said? Madam Clerk or City Attorney?
Let me, typically, typically what would occur is a situation where the five of you appoint from your districts a representative. Those five then meet, and they then select the at-large members. They, as a body, would normally, themselves as an organization, decide what that process would look like. You could, I guess, dictate that process. And I suppose, if it was four members, you could dictate that all five must meet with all the applicants and interview all of them, which is, again, a very cumbersome process. But you control that, but typically, from a council perspective, you would normally create the framework and allow the body itself to move forward with its own organizational development.
Well, that is an alternative.
Oh, absolutely.
Or if council chose to make the at-large appointments, you could do them here, and put the poor applicants on the spot, and do your interviews in front of all five of you, and then there's no.
Which can be pretty unwieldy.
I like the, so that would alleviate some of the concerns you had, right, Mayor, in terms of a?
They would. I still would prefer the direct appoint, the five, which Councilmember Jung has suggested.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one more possibility, I would recommend this, but one of my cities, what they do is, take all the at-large, put them into a pot, and use blind draw the four people. Does not even interview process, but it's.
That's actually a fairer system.
It's another process.
So can we do the four plus, I mean, the five directed and four at-large? Is there a will for that?
I'm okay with the two at-large. I think the City Attorney's suggestion as well is not a bad one as well. I do like the notion of the advisory committee picking and interviewing the at-large members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that's a compromise that I could bend in that direction as well. All right.
Okay, so five direct, each appointed by a council member. Do you want a district requirement for that, or would you like to just strive to appoint from your own district, as keeping your fingers crossed that you have applicants from each district? Sometimes that doesn't happen.
It was much easier when everything was at-large. We wouldn't even be having this conversation.
We left that loophole for, I want to say loophole, that contingency with the committees in the event that, we sort of assumed that council members by default would want to appoint from their district, but in case we didn't have a qualified applicant from the district, it gave you the flexibility to appoint from elsewhere, so we would still have a quorum.
Yeah, and I would like that, because we never know where the best candidate might come from, and maybe right on the border of my district.
It's about the best candidates, and that's why, again, at-large is a more unifying way.
I could support that, Councilman Silva.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jung.
So not a district requirement, but it'll probably work out in a practical sense, anyway. And then, the two at-large will be appointed by the committee?
Yes.
Okay. No, I lost my page, I was cheating, my cheat sheet. That took care of number of members, that took care of how they are appointed, we took care of the district residency question, 18 and over, would you prefer?
It should be voting age, yes.
Yes. I'm looking at Councilmember Zara, who doesn't seem to have anything to say, so I think he's okay with that one. I didn't want to forget about you.
Thank you, no, I'm okay with that.
Okay. And then, do you want to have any additional requirements during service or post-service that are not required by the state law for this committee? Those are the things, such as prohibition of running for council for a certain number of years after service on the commission, or can't be appointed to an office or a committee for a certain number of years, or can't make a campaign contribution, can't be employed.
I don't like the idea of them not being able to be appointed or run. I mean, we're going to ultimately decide, and that may tell us, well, we shouldn't be here, we're deciding.
We may run out of candidates if we put any further restrictions on future elections. Now, I'm joking about that.
The only thing I would ask is, during their in-service, that they're not affiliated with one of our campaigns or committees, or, you know, lobbying or advocating directly, or, well, they're not part of our.
That could be hard to establish. I see what you're getting at.
Process is so quick, there wouldn't be much activity, hopefully, that kind of way.
Yeah, all right, fair enough.
Yeah, okay, so I haven't filed no additional requirements beyond that, I think we are good. So, again, I'll make that announcement that the applications are on our website, they are due October 4th. Councilmembers, I will forward applications to you as they come in, since given the short timeframe. And then I'll give you another final batch at the end, so you have them all in one PDF file. And we'll hopefully be ready to make appointments on October 4th.
You've had this discussion, I think you've got consensus, but it might be appropriate to have a single motion incorporating all these, so the clerk has a record of your formal approval of these conditions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to have a seven-member committee, five direct appointments, two at large. The five-member committee choosing the two at large. And that we adopt the Madam Clerk's timeline as well.
Thank you.
With regards to the process, and.
Eighteen and over.
Eighteen and over, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded.
One more roll call vote, Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, I'll try not to talk about redistricting too much in between now and April, but I probably will.
We are now at agenda item number three. And the subject is outdoor dining program potential extension. And we have Mr. Post to present.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Excuse me, my name is Greg Post, I'm the interim director of community and economic development. And the item before you is the outdoor dining. By way of background, you may be aware the municipal code allows for outdoor dining with approval of an encroachment permit and a CUP normally for businesses. However, when indoor dining was restricted by the state of California as a result of the pandemic, the city, like other municipalities in California, moved forward and relaxed its standards and allowed outdoor dining, both in public and private spaces here in the city. The council last extended the program through September 30th of this year, and hence that's why we're here tonight, to see what the council would like to do in regards to this program. Within the report, staff had identified three major decision points that we'd like to get direction from the city council on. The first is, should the temporary program be extended? Second, if extended, then for how long? And third, if extended, should additional options or operational conditions be applied to the owners of those outdoor dining areas? Regarding decision point number one, should the program be extended? Within the report, staff provided a series of pros and cons related to discontinuing the program. I'll go through those real quickly. In discontinuing the program, some of the pros are that it puts other businesses on equal footing, those that may not have the opportunity to have outdoor dining areas. In relaxing the standards, what that has done is we've seen an increase cost to the city in regards to staff time and monitoring outdoor dining areas, particularly in regards to the police department and enforcement and dealing with monitoring of loitering and altercations. In addition, also the fire department, as well as code enforcement activity, monitoring those outdoor areas. Also, in regards to discontinuing the program, it would restore access to public spaces and parking areas, as well as parking revenue. It would improve public safety, address building occupancy concerns, and also deal perhaps with some trash and maintenance areas. Some of the cons to discontinuing the program is, well, the uncertainty of the pandemic and any future state mandates that may come forward in having property owners want to then redo outdoor dining again. The loss of revenue for businesses that participate in the program, as well as the subsequent loss of sales tax revenue for the city. Also removes the attractiveness of the outdoor dining areas in the city of Fullerton. In regards to the decision point number two, if the council extends the program, then for how long? Staff was recommending consideration that the council consider up to January 31st of 2022 as a potential date. That would allow enough time for the uncertainty of the pandemic to play through, hopefully. It would allow time for businesses to decide if they want to dismantle their operation and/or apply for a permanent outdoor dining area. It also would take it through the holiday period, which maybe has some benefits to the business owners. In regards to decision point number three, if the program is extended by the council, should the city impose additional operational conditions to address issues such as the costs and safety issues that I mentioned earlier? Those operational conditions are identified, or at least staff has identified some within the report, including things such as operational standards dealing with posting of occupancy levels within the business in every area of the business, including the outdoor dining area, so we can more regulate and monitor what's going on. We've had issues in regards to over occupancy of areas. Allowing the sale of alcohol only with food in outdoor areas, providing proper ingress and egress, and dealing with trash maintenance and maintenance of the outdoor dining areas themselves. The ability for the city to rescind the approval if there's violations by the property owner. Release of liability for use of the public spaces, and developing a safety and security plan that would be approved by the police department. Requiring building permits for various types of improvements in the outdoor dining area, and perhaps requiring a fee for the loss of public parking spaces and any other additional areas of concern that the council may want to add. If the council agrees with wanting to add additional operational standards, staff would recommend that it be somewhat of an over-the-counter kind of permit process where the owner would be required to apply for and receive a permit by the end of October. And then if not, then they would discontinue and remove their outdoor dining area. With that, then, just in summary again, staff is really trying to get direction from the city council on one, should the temporary program be extended, if so, for how long? And if it is extended, would you like to do some operational standards in addition to that? And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
You know, I think it's interesting to think of where we're at now versus when, you know, the program first started, considering, I guess, all that's happened in the, what, eighteen to, you know, nineteen months? I think that it's been in existence. But by and large, this has been, I think, a wildly successful program. And I think, you know, Fullerton is not alone in now kind of grappling with, hey, how do we continue? I obviously have been contacted by a number of, you know, property owners and restaurant owners here in town who are very supportive of it. You know, I know myself, my family, we all try to take advantage of the opportunities to go outside and, you know, and enjoy some of the restaurants that we love so much. But I see this really as kind of two different issues. So first, I mean, kind of the short of it, I'm supportive of it. But I do think that we need to continue with some guidelines in place. And so perhaps we look at how to differentiate between both, you know, kind of private property that can continue to be used this way, and also public property. You know, private property, I think for me, this is a pretty simple issue. As long as a property owner consents with maybe an amendment or, you know, an adjustment to, say, that's added an outdoor patio. If the property owner has agreed and the tenant is willing to do that, I think we should be willing to, you know, to work with them to allow for or accommodate that. You know, and I think I would be okay with that happening, really, year-round, as long as the private property owner agrees with that. Of course, if the property owner doesn't agree, I don't think that's something that should be allowed. With respect to public property, you know, I was reading the other day, I think, that Manhattan Beach dealt with this issue. And rather than continue to allow it, which is what I'm gonna suggest, or what I would support at this point, yeah, they actually had looked and said, okay, well, we're gonna take it away, but then we're gonna figure out a way to actually, you know, charge for this after the pandemic. I actually thought that's a really great way to generate activity in our downtown area. You know, because I think so many people have come out and are supporting the restaurants, obviously it becomes then a destination, that people are coming to downtown. They want to walk around and maybe patronize other businesses or shops that they might not necessarily, you know, do otherwise. So I think, you know, I, look, I think at this point, you know, you read different articles and studies about how long this pandemic is expected to, you know, endure. And I think at this point, you know, people seem to think that by the end of Q1 2022, things will be back, you know, somewhat to normal. So I would support, you know, leaving the existing arrangement in place at least until that time. But I think ahead of that time, I'd like for us to figure out a way that we can do something to allow for, like perhaps a seasonal occupancy of some of the public spaces in town that has, I think, you know, a fair charge, so that this doesn't constitute a gift of public funds. And, you know, I think we'll have plenty of time to review that, so that we can get kind of a win-win in place that's both, you know, good for our local small businesses and restaurants, and also good for the community. You know, I think it's, I think this is really an opportunity for us to, you know, kind of embrace something that's become what's truly a win-win for us, and I think we can do that.
I usually wait for last, allow me to inject here, if I may. Ever since I was elected to the council in 2010, back then it was a real burning issue about al fresco dining in the city of Fullerton, something that we didn't accommodate at all back then. And councils, earlier councils wrestled with this notion for a while. And in many cases, staff recommended charging fairly high amounts, which defeated the whole notion of al fresco dining, made it not economically feasible. In the case recently, we've had this pandemic, which injured restaurant businesses far worse than many other businesses, put them on life support, or worse, in many cases. So many haven't survived the pandemics and the lockouts. What has occurred, though, that I believe is very positive, is we do have now some outdoor dining in downtown Fullerton. And, you know, face it, an active marketplace, any kind of a marketplace is messy by its nature. But that's what makes it so attractive. I don't know how many people here enjoy Santa Monica and the closed-off streets, where it's virtually an outdoor mall with all sorts of food and shopping alternatives. A favorite of mine is Melbourne, or actually Melbourne, as they call it in Australia. I don't know if you're familiar with the Carlton District, which has a little Italy. It has Turkish, Greek, Mexican food, all sorts. And they spill out over the sidewalks with canopies. By its nature, it's messy, it's not quite as easy to police, there are occasional issues with it. But by and large, they're wildly popular, and they're very successful. And so I wouldn't like to see anything that would dampen what we have begun in Fullerton, even that partial close where we've closed off Wilshire. I think that's something a council needs to consider extending in the future as well. So I would be wide open to continuing this experiment, and particularly because we have this stop-and-start pandemic situation. And I think that we could be a little too high control. We could squeeze that with a little too much control, and we could kill off a lot of attractive businesses in this city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
Sir, I would agree with you that during this pandemic, the hospitality industry in particular was impacted much more heavily than some of the other sectors of our economy. And outdoor dining was served as a much-needed lifeline for many of them. And I would not want to deny them that. Certainly, I think it needs to be continued, but in the form that it's in right now, I could not support it, because it is just, right now, a free-for-all. I think what happens is there are bad actors that come into any space that isn't regulated to some degree. And those bad actors are right now giving everybody that's positive and doing the right things a terrible name. So per our public safety officials, I would move that we cease it as it stands right now and recreate something that's a little bit more regulated. And I know that folks hate that word, but we can't have the overcrowding, we can't have the level of malfeasance that are liable to occur or have already occurred, perhaps, in some cases. So I would move that we continue it, but in a regulated manner. And I am, of course, sir, I've expressed this view before. I don't believe Wilshire should be closed any longer than it already has been. I think in that particular case, that street does need to be open for pedestrians, cars, and bicycles, sir.
Mr., you know, just one question before, I guess, we go to public comments. Can we, do, Wilshire, when we close it off, which is, I enjoy it, and we've gone there quite a bit, if we decide to go that way, can we look to see if we can make a bike lane? Because I think part of the reason that Wilshire got paved and got fixed, if you will, was because of bike grants. So I will, is there a way we could do that, if we go forward with Wilshire that have some sort of bike lane, so that the four people, or the few people that ride bikes that can actually go through that area there? That would be my only question to consider before we can go out there. But I do enjoy the outdoor dining, and we frequent, I think the only, I think, looking at some of the owners out there, I've been to every one of your restaurants during this whole pandemic, and enjoyed a beverage and a food. But that would be my only question.
Staff is working with the Active Transportation Committee, and also with the Transportation Committee on how we could incorporate a bike lane.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you can take Wilshire and kind of redesign it how you like. I've seen other cities that can, you can take a public way, and you can have it open some of the times for public and close it during other times, too, as you can do a variety of different things, as well as augment the roadway to have more bike lanes and what have you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zara?
Yes, thank you. I'm, I think it's definitely, I think, important to keep outdoor dining in some form, because it does bring more activity to our downtown, so it's, there's an economic benefit to the entire city. Certainly, we need to provide some sort of framework as we move forward in a more permanent fashion. I, I'm not okay with discontinuing abruptly, because I think we need to give some time for some of the businesses to adjust. So I would ask, I would be inclined to say that we develop framework for more permanent outdoor dining within sixty days, maybe, if that's feasible, or maybe ninety days. We're going into the winter season anyway, which is gonna curb some of the outdoor activities in any case. So just give some time to keep the program as it is. But put a deadline, and then within this timeframe, we can maybe develop some sort of permanent rules and standards that we could apply after that.
I hope that most of you heard that. He's advocating an extension of maybe sixty days. He pointed out something, though, that I feel is very important. We have a natural dampening with shorter days, cooler temperatures, and rain, potentially, over the next several months. And it was mentioned earlier as well, the holiday period is approaching, which would be something that I think most of these businesses would be depending on. I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Jung, but it's a little reminiscent of me when I was a student back in school. If we had one or two bad actors, a class clown in the class, the teacher, some certain teachers would punish the entire class for that. I'm much more a believer of managing by exception. And if so, if there is a problem and a bad actor, then deal with that exception. But I don't think I'd care to punish a lot of these business owners who've worked really extra hard and made investments in the outdoor ability to meet all the requirements and to serve customers. And there's a constant pressure in this city to say, let's get away from the bars and let's have more restaurants. Well, this is indeed having more restaurants, it's actually enabling that. So that, those would be my concerns about clamping down right now. I think they're very vulnerable right now, and I would actually, I would make a motion that we would extend the current conditions for another six months at this point, because.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Because that would actually include, it would get through the holidays, but then it would include January, February, March, which, again, are not really high-demand, high-turnout periods.
I'll second that, I'd second that.
There will be, and so I agree, you're getting a very extended discussion by the council, which is unusual on this.
If I can get, sir, one, a couple of things. First and foremost, I don't know that anybody agrees up here with ending the outdoor dining. I think we all agree that it should be continued, but in the manner in which it's continued, and for the length of time, I think, is the discussion right now. I would like to hear from the police department, per our public safety, where they stand. Police Department, uh, per our public safety, uh, where they stand on, uh, the, at the, the way the rule, uh, the, the way the exception is made now. There's very little regulation is in place, as I, I'm aware of. So it, it, is that something that hampers your capacity to, to serve the city?
All right. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council. I'm Captain Jose Rana here, filling in for Chief Dunn. So in general, the Police Department's position is to support our outdoor businesses, outdoor dining, while balancing the safety of the patrons and the businesses. We do agree, um, just like, uh, the new director mentioned. We do believe in regulating outdoor dining through community development. Uh, some of those regulations that kind of we see are most, more important are outdoor capacity and the use of outdoor heaters, for example. So those, right now, are major issues or concerns.
And, uh, Councilmember Jung, thank you for that. We are further ahead than we normally are at this point before we seek public input. So if there's nothing further at this stage, we would, we would do that. Is that acceptable? Okay, we would, uh, we would request anyone wishing to address the council to come forward to the microphone.
Well, so we know positions that the council members have already taken on this.
Well, we can be swayed by your comments.
Well, I, I certainly do hope so. Um, regardless of which direction you choose to go, um, to end it now, um, to allow only on private property, or, you know, some kind of hybrid or extending, what I would like to be considered, because this wasn't, um, considered when, um, the former, uh, the city manager unilaterally closed, or allowed this and unilaterally closed, um, Wilshire Bike Boulevard without consulting with the Active Transportation Committee, and then the council extended this, um, at the beginning of the year before the Active Transportation Committee had been, um, had met, um, it's extended to September, and we had numerous times at our meetings asked if we could somehow communicate to you, our council, that we would like to have access to the Bike Boulevard. So as there's a consideration for extending this, um, and an understanding that there is a goal or an interest in, um, closing Wilshire permanently, the consideration needs to be made, as, as Councilmember Jesus noted, that, um, this primarily, we're trying to put dining on a bike boulevard, and, um, there, there, there's a lot of great options that could be worked around, um, without, that, that needs to be done sooner rather than later. We don't need to wait until there's permanent facilities and permanent, um, improvements made, um, because there, there's been allowed for dining with temporary installations in the street. There should as well be a way to facilitate throughput for bicyclists, um, uninterrupted, uh, without having to wait for those permanent facilities. Um, and this also provides sort of a trial, uh, version of, of, uh, trying to, to co-facilitate eating in the street while people are trying to get through the street.
Well, I, I just have a quick question for you, which is, of course, just to the east of this, we have the farmer's market often, where we shut off Wilshire for an extension there as well, in the bike path as well.
Right, so if you could do that with the dining and make it...
That's only one night a week.
Right, exactly. And it, and they remove their facilities, um, when they're not, uh, in operation. Yeah, so that kind of idea is, is a great idea to, to make it so it's not, um, continuous. Um, you know, there's times when the restaurants aren't even open and a cyclist can't ride through there. So that's a great idea to, to go in that direction.
The farmer's market doesn't have overhead, though, as, as the restaurants do.
The, the restaurants have an overhead for their, um, facilities that they own and they operate in and their license to operate in. Um, that doesn't, you know, while it is nice to, um, allow that in the street...
I'm sorry.
I'm having, I'm having a conversation that's being facilitated by our mayor.
No, I ask a question.
I just wanted to honor his question.
Yeah, we need to move on. Thank you. Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, my name is Ron Kobayashi. I've been a 35-year professional jazz musician, basically here in Fullerton. I started out the Melody Inn, which is no longer there, and then I was at Steamers for 20 years, and now my residency is at Les Amis in Fullerton. Um, and I want to speak on behalf of having outdoor dining, because, um, not only does it facilitate a, a wonderful dining experience for our citizens, but also live music. And, um, as a sidebar, I'd like to, um, just mention that I think in addition to allowing outdoor dining, we should allow outdoor music. Um, and I know that, that Les Amis has been... Les Amis has been penalized by the city code inspectors about the volume of music from one complaint. Um, but I want to point out how important that is, not only to the revenue to the city from, uh, taxes, but to keep the restaurant alive and to keep the restaurant going, and to bring culture to the, to the city, which I think is so important. Um, so I really want to recommend, as a 35-year professional musician, that not only do we have outdoor dining, but that we have live music in those outdoor, outdoor areas and keep, um, keep art alive, keep revenues pumping to the city, and keep the citizenry happy and enjoying their, their, uh, time, especially during this time of COVID. Um, and, uh, above all, that we really need to be cognizant of the fact that during COVID, the government's number one priority should be to keep its citizenry safe, and you can't keep them safe by forcing them indoors. Have to be outdoors. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Homel, and I want to, uh, uh, echo some of what Ron had to say. I'm, I'm from out of town. I'm from Long Beach, but, um, my family and I and my friends, uh, come out to, specifically to Le Ami on Saturday nights regularly and, and spend, uh, large sums of out-of-town money in Fullerton, uh, and, and it's to support that venue and to support, uh, the live music there. Um, and, uh, you know, there are so few places that, that, that jazz musicians can perform, and I, I think Le Ami is one of the only ones in, in Orange County, let alone Fullerton, and jazz, of course, is, you know, classical African-American music, uh, developed by African-American geniuses back in the day, and then, you know, now sort of a gem that we all, uh, that we all enjoy and, and should support, you know, considered pretty much the only original American art form. Um, but it's a gem that often can't find a home, and Le Ami has really gone out of its way to take a chance and offer a home for that, uh, in Fullerton in the midst of this pandemic. Um, and they partnered with, with Ron, who, uh, is, is really a Fullerton institution, uh, his group being often voted, you know, the number one jazz group in Orange County by, um, the, the, uh, Orange County, um, what's that place called? Uh, what is it called? Yeah, The Register and other, other publications as well. Uh, and, um, I know, I know back in the day before the pandemic, uh, Ron and Le Ami were also bringing in, um, once a month, uh, young jazz musicians that were part of a, um, jazz education group here, uh, in Fullerton. So they were supporting music education as well. I would encourage you that if there is an issue concerning sound, that there should be some sort of uniform decibel, uh, um, meter reading that's, that's adopted for indoor and outdoor dining, 'cause you can have, um, outdoor music that's quite soft, and you can have loud indoor music that's actually bleeding through quite a bit more than, say, an acoustic guitar or something that's just on the outside. So it shouldn't be just, uh, left up to some, some one, you know, one in particular squeaky wheel that, that decides that, that they don't like the, the sound of downtown Fullerton, even though they've chosen to live in downtown Fullerton. But, um, there should be some uniform scientific decibel level that, that you adhere to, as, as, uh, country clubs do that are located in neighborhoods, and, and other cities have adopted that as well.
One quick clarification. There's a dividing line between amplified outdoor music or non-amplified. Uh, which way are you?
Let me say there's not, and, and I went through this...
Well, I, I don't want to extend your speaking time, but, uh, just a quick answer. That was all that I wanted.
Well, but, 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 uh, just to answer your question, you can have an amplified keyboard that you can't even hear. You can have an unamplified conga drum that'll drap- break your ears. So that's why it's, uh, it's imperative that you have a specific decibel level rather than some sort of arbitrary rule like that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Edmund Velasco. I am the president of the American Federation Musicians, uh, Local Seven in Orange County, and I represent a lot of musicians, um, not just jazz musicians, but orchestral and theme park musicians. Um, but, uh, but we, I also do a lot of freelance, uh, representation, and during the pandemic, those musicians were hit the hardest. If it wasn't for the pandemic unemployment assistance, a lot of them, well, I know a lot of them did have to sell their equipment just to make rent. And it, and I, I want to encourage you guys, I, it sounds like outdoor dining is something that's gonna be a, a permanent part, I mean, of Fullerton, which would be great, because, you know, we have the weather for it, and it keeps much, many more people safe during this pandemic. And you're right, it, it's been a wild ride. One, one month you think you're gonna be okay, and the next month, you're having to shut down things again. And outdoor dining not only serves the public, it also, um, like, uh, Mr. Kobayashi said, it helps serve the cultural, um, awareness of our community, and I really, um, want to applaud you guys for, um, really taking this, uh, subject and extending it. I think that it's, uh, especially in Southern California, we have the weather, and let's use it. Everybody seems to like it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jan Stevens, and I'm here representing people who love live music and love eating outdoors now that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And I was, I'm also a former critical care nurse, and I was looking at some statistics today, and the vaccination rate for Orange County is still below 70%. And so, again, to reiterate, keeping the public safe is a great thing that can be done through outdoor dining, but also, music feeds the soul. It's, again, part of the culture, and Fullerton has a rich history of supporting jazz. If you look at Steamers, how long it was here, over 20 years, and I just want to urge you to continue to let us have outdoor dining and outdoor live music. It's not like these restaurants, like Les Amis, are featuring Metallica tribute bands. This is soft, what we call dinner set music that they feature. People love it. The restaurant's been able to survive and start to thrive again because it's been available, and people like myself and other patrons, I live in Anaheim, very close to the Fullerton border, and I come to downtown Fullerton frequently for live music, and I just urge you to continue it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor Pro, Council, Jack Franklin. Uh, born and raised in Berea, but my companies are here in Fullerton for the last, wow, 31 years. Hard to believe. Gotten a little fatter, a little balder, but it's been 31 great years. And through this whole rollercoaster of these 31 years, the last couple of years have been the roughest. And again, I have my patios, and I, yes, I am using city property right now on this other patio. Uh, I'm just not thinking of myself. I'm thinking of the overall community, that I think we need to keep this thing around a little bit longer, just because of, who knows what's gonna happen? It's, it's a crapshoot of who's in office on both ends, and anything can happen, and I would have, I would hate to hear and see folks tear down certain things and then have to rebuild them if we do get shut down again. Another six months is not gonna kill us, that's for sure. Hopefully not in that way. But overall, um, with Wilshire, definitely, I think is a permanent spot to shut down. And I think on the opposite side of the street with Amridge, it might be something in the future you might want to think of, too. 'Cause if you look at what everybody's doing in the outdoor dining and whatnot, and create that vibe, we got, we got Orange right now killing us. It's killing my business. Orange has gone full circle. They're getting rid of half the antique shops and moving in restaurants and whatnot, and this and that, and we, we felt that. We felt that prior to the pandemic, and we gotta start catching up with, with some of this whatnot. And I understand, uh, traffic and trash, and I think with the outdoor dining and folks using the outdoors is actually keeping the downtown cleaner. Instead of not having outdoor dining, and they don't look past their front door versus using the public right away, they are cleaning things up. I think with the, what comes down to the trash, I think, is around the freeways and whatnot, 'cause yes, we do have an issue. But I'm not gonna get too far off the subject, 'cause people that do know me, like Kelly, I can start jabbering away on everything and anything. But I think we need to keep this around for at least another six months, and thank you guys very much for your considerations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Simon Collier, and I own the Old Ship British Pub, and, uh, my dad opened that just behind the heels of Jack, actually, when, uh, so we've been around 29 years, 93. We also, I also own the British Grocer, uh, which has been around about 40 years, um, up by the cellar. And until last week, I owned the Old Ship in Santa Ana of 17 years, and I had to close it down because of COVID. It's gone. Uh, 15 months of shutdown, the bills didn't go away. Um, a lot of you people don't realize that the bills don't stop. I mean, my landlord hasn't given me any rent relief. Um, insurance didn't change. I, uh, the takeout bit was great to pu- to pay for the kitchen, the kitchen stuff. It didn't cover the bills, and, um, I had to close after 17 years. So all I have left is Fullerton, and, um, I'm not in downtown Fullerton, despite what people think, and I know the discussion and the, and the, the recommendations to the council are based on things that are happening in downtown Fullerton, and I'd like to speak for all of Fullerton, because these rules apply to all of Fullerton and there's restaurants throughout Fullerton. I've never been allowed a patio. I haven't, I probably had the first conditional use permit give, issued to my father back in 92, when we opened in 93. Um, I have restricted hours, which I still adhere to. I cannot be open till 2:00 or midnight. I can't even do New Year's, based on my rules. But we follow those rules, and I don't change my business. My dad didn't change the business. We're a British pub. Um, to, to talk about music, we were never allowed live music, but now we do one night a week, and yeah, we've had code enforcement come by and say, you know, your music needs to be below conversation level. And I've got these persons on an acoustic guitar, but they need to, even now, you can't hear me, right? 'Cause unless I speak over. But people are talking out in the patio and having a good time, and it was one of the few places where kids can actually come, 'cause I'm a restaurant. I don't change my rules at 9:00 PM. I don't let under 20, I, anyone can come. And, uh, today, the death toll from this pandemic, which will become an endemic, um, has killed more people than the 1919 flu. And so please allow us to continue outside dining. People will say it gives me 200% occupancy, but in reality, I, my customer base is scared, and they want to sit outside. I have immunocompromised people in 60, 70 years old that want to sit outside, and please allow that.
Mr. Collier, uh, we shall miss the Old Ship Santa Ana.
Thank you.
Very much.
Counsel, my name is Glenn Sutter, and I live in Fullerton, and, uh, I go to Le Ami, and I listen to Ron and his group and that, um, as much as I can, and that, and, um, to, to be able to go outside there, and the way it's kept up outside at Le Ami, tables are spread out, and that, um, the, the owners of Le Ami and that, um, they're there, you know, they make sure that everything's running well, and, um, and outside dining and that, especially with the pandemic and that, is, uh, is a lot better than inside dining and that. And, um, again, I really thank you for your, um, your cooperation and that, and really appreciate it and that. Thank you.
My name is...
My name is George Dufresne, and I live in your sister city, La Habra. I've been living there for 65 years. And I would say two-thirds of my entertainment dollars are spent in Fullerton just because of the great restaurants, the great music, and the great atmosphere. So I'll be brief and say that it would be a loss, you know, if we could go to Fullerton to enjoy our life. And so, you know how to vote, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Gina Monte Cristo from Les Amis Restaurant. Thank you all for your support. I did come to talk about one thing, but I'll talk about three. And I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget. So bear with me one moment. Of course, the first thing I do want to talk about is the outdoor, the outdoor music and dining. Just a small correction. We did not get penalized. We did get a notice to stop playing music outside. And what I really want to say about that is, Les Amis Restaurant and the Old Ship and a couple of other little restaurants that close at 10 o'clock, we're the type of business that Fullerton needs. We're the type of business that Fullerton should want to keep around and want to grow and want to help in every way that they can. And we have been so grateful for the city because you have went above and beyond to make sure that restaurants are taken care of and are always looked after. And you've made it possible for us to put our chairs outside. It doesn't affect me any. I have my own patio. We've been blessed that way. But for everybody else, I think you've done a fantastic job. This outdoor music, though, is a bit of a strain for us because people don't want to sit inside. We used to offer music indoors. We still close at 10 o'clock. We were doing it once a month, or sorry, once a week. Then we went to twice a week, and then we went to three times a week indoors. And then when the pandemic hit, obviously, all of that stopped. And people are thirsty. It's a sense of community. It gets a load off their mind, you know, one time a week. We close at 10 o'clock. House parties go longer than that. So I really feel that outdoor music should continue. It shouldn't even end at the end of COVID or when we've decided that things should go back to normal. Because like you've heard from a couple of people, the residents in the surrounding cities have made Fullerton kind of like their hub to go and enjoy entertainment. And this is grown-up type of entertainment. It's not nightclubs where the policemen have to worry about us or ever come to our stores or deal with our patrons. Also, we, let's see. Yeah, that's all I want to say about that, sorry. So I would encourage that we decide to keep outdoor music, especially for family restaurants where you can bring your children, where you could bring your grandma and your grandpa just to have a good time. The other thing I want to talk about that came up while we were here, my personal belief, although, again, it doesn't affect me at all, Wilshire should be permanently closed. It's been a great way to have people enjoy the outdoor dining. Yeah, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. Monte Cristo.
Hello. My name is Jay Kirsch, and I guess I'm two people. One is I'm a music lover, and I live in a very boring town called Irvine. And when I want to do something fun, I actually go to Fullerton. Fullerton, to me, is the happening city in Orange County. And I recognize that, you know, that's where Leo Fender did his best work as far as making guitars. So Fullerton has a very long history of music. And music should always be promoted in Fullerton. It's something you should be very proud of. But the other thing that I am is an engineer who specializes in acoustics and audio. And so I've had the occasion to be able to walk around with an SPL meter that is, in fact, IEC 651 compliant. And a lot of the music that is happening outdoors is actually within the proper levels. Once we get out into the residential areas and whatever, it's like the music is not exceeding what it is that, what the code is prescribing. And in those cases, it's like we, you know, you should, if someone's calling the police on something like that, then we need to get out our SPL meters and prove that, hey, you know, this music is well within limits. So that's.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Might I ask you, since this is your area of expertise, sir, what are the acceptable levels that you've witnessed walking around with this meter, sir?
So the acceptable levels are 55 is what you've published in your noise ordinances. And that is for, you guys have a staggered schedule where you go from 55, and then you allow 60 for a certain amount of time. I think it's like a half an hour. And then you allow 65 for 15 minutes, and you allow 70 dB for five minutes. And, but then that also gets scaled by what the ambient level is. And depending on whether it's motorcycle night, you know, that level can change. Ambient levels get down, all the way down to 52 when there's not a whole lot going on. But as the traffic picks up, that number starts pushing 60. And it can actually get above 60. With a larger band, yes, it's going to get louder. It depends on the amount of amplification, the number of instruments, and how loud those instruments are. With acoustic guitar, you are at 55. If someone's just playing a guitar through a PA, then you're going to hit 55, and you're actually going to be compliant the whole night. And as you start adding more instruments, things do start to get louder, and then you're mostly compliant.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We do have one Zoom comment, or at least one hand raised at the moment. And Matt, you should be able to unmute and talk.
Here I am. Can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. You know, I think any, any extension of the outdoor dining rules as they stand should include a firm commitment by the council to reopen the Wilshire Bike Boulevard in some reasonable way so that cyclists do not have to dismount and walk through that. What is a bike boulevard, as Ms. Rans noted, with outdoor dining plunked in the middle of it, unilaterally allowed by a city manager who's now no longer even employed by the city? And some of the restaurants there, we should recall, stayed open during a mandated closure by state health officials on public property. So I think if we're going to continue to repurpose public spaces and facilities for private profit, we should expect some reasonable standards of behavior from the businesses. Most of them seem to have been behaving pretty well. But I would note that as, well, Mr. Mayor, you noted that you enjoyed Santa Monica's outdoor dining. One of the things that's great about that is they don't allow smoking there. And they don't allow it in most cities. If you check, you know, you can't smoke in outdoor dining areas, particularly in the public spaces. So I would say that if you're going to start planning some sort of comprehensive rules for outdoor dining throughout the city, that you ought to prohibit smoking there, you know, for the betterment of public health. And Mr. Silva is right. In fact, the reason that there's that nice asphalt there for the restaurants on the 100 block of West Wilshire for diners is that the bicycle boulevard was put in. That's the only reason that area got paved. And so now cyclists can't even use it. And yet, you know, the whole reason it's there is because the, you know, a former committee that's now the Active Transportation Committee helped to shepherd that through. And with money from OCTA, was allowed to put that in. It is used, and I think that that should be, you know, that's a real concern. And I would appreciate it if the council would make a very firm commitment tonight before taking any action about that. Thank you.
And that's it for Zoom callers.
All right, we'll bring the item back to the council. I want to thank everyone, a commenter here because we did move forward quite a bit on our discussion on this. But I do want to assure you that we are listening as well. So appreciate your comments. Yes, Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I would hardly agree with the comments out there. I think we should keep the outdoor dining open. And I do like the idea, though, of keeping it open, not shutting it down, but also put in some operational procedures to help with some of those bad apples that we have out there and then get a little more structure in place. Because when this happened, it happened overnight. We needed to accommodate some of our restaurants who were closing. And you're right, I mean, we, it was shut down, and we said, okay, we're going to do outdoor dining, and we were just kind of going with it. But I would like to see us, you know, keep it open. And if it's the will of the council to do up to six months, that's great. But I would like for us to also extend the responsibility to our staff to add additional operating, what do we call it, conditions so that we can mitigate some of those, as Mr. Jung said, there are bad apples. And I don't feel we should punish the whole classroom for a couple of bad apples. We should address those bad apples and allow the restaurants that are doing it right to continue and help. And I also agree with Mr. Dunlap that we don't want to have this seem like a gift of public funds. So we should do something to alleviate that. And with the current budget crisis that we have, I think anything that we can do to help our staff in terms of give them a little more support would be beneficial to our situation. So I would move in the direction of allowing this outdoor dining to continue. And just again, to figure out a way to open up the bike boulevard so that the cyclists can go through there, you know, not all the time, most of the time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
I want to clarify two things. This is a discussion about outdoor dining, not outdoor music. So while I understand the concerns about Les Amis, I think we can direct staff to come to a resolution that favors that particular location. And we can keep Ron Kobayashi and jazz music flourishing in downtown Fullerton. So that's, that's one. But I think what we're discussing right now is outdoor dining. And I do agree with Councilman Silva that we have to put some common sense regulations in place that prevent and deter bad actors in place, also to assist our public safety in doing their jobs and protecting the public. Moreover, I think Wilshire Boulevard should, I would not support closing down Wilshire Boulevard any longer than it already has been. I'd give it, you know, a calculated amount of months and then open that bike boulevard back up. And that's where I stand right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Well, Councilmember Zara, do you want to comment at this time?
I think all the sentiments that I.
A little louder.
Code, I don't know, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm running a little low on energy, and I do have a fever. So I apologize. But I do think that extending the time for now, putting some regulations, looking at some permanent rules, and then making sure that the bike lane is accessible for people during this extension and then beyond that as well. I do like the idea of keeping Wilshire closed, but as long as we can accommodate the bike lane as well. I know it's happened, it's doable. We've seen it in other cities, and I don't think we're, I think we can, we are capable of doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem.
Not much to add. I just wanted to point out there is a motion and also a second on the table. But at this point, just wanted to reiterate, I really see this as two separate issues. We've got private property. Where as long as the property owner agrees, I think, you know, this is something that a tenant should be allowed to do, you know, 365 days a year. Regarding the use of public property, I'm supportive of the six-month extension for the time being. Then after that, I think we can work on a permanent, you know, policy, perhaps limited to seasonal or what have you. And I think that would be part of a more robust public discussion, whether it also be some cost so that it's not, you know, considered a gift of public funds. But I think right now, you know, what we need to do is continue it another six months, you know, figure out some sort of solution for the, you know, to allow people to use the bike path there. And I, you know, I'm trying to, it's hard to picture just how wide the street is there. But, you know, my, you know, I think there'd probably be a way that, I think because you've got kind of Mulberry Street on the, would that be on the west side? You got Stadium Tavern on the other side. You know, and right now, I don't think there's necessarily a divider between the two. So perhaps there's a way to, you know, make some kind of a lane that goes kind of through, and people aren't crossing over. So you don't have people getting hit. But, you know, I think there's a way to do that. So let's get this done.
Well, thank you for that. I certainly am concerned about bike riders as well. But during this pandemic, I don't see it as a tremendous hardship to get off the bike and walk it for a block and then start riding again. That, otherwise, to have high-speed bicycles cutting through at any juncture, and it's a crowded area, is asking for trouble, I believe. But I would be open to any reasonable compromise. I'd be supportive of that because I'd like to see the bike riders have what they like and to allow the diners to occur as well. There's one thing that I'd be concerned about sending the message as a city council. And I think this discussion might have been helpful for Mr. Post as well to try to get a sense of direction, even as we vacillate often between two different points, is businesses really rely on predictability, a certain amount of predictability. And when you make investments, you really do need to create a return from those investments. And so this back and forth, this whipsaw that we've had with the indoor/outdoor, you know, no social gathering and back and forth, I saw many businesses that made large investments, and then those lie dormant for extended periods of time because of higher-level political decisions that have been happening. So again, I thank everyone for their interest. I think there is some compromise that can be had here. There is a motion, which has been seconded.
But I think you would have to amend it because the first motion was just up to January. And I think now we want to do six months. Is that correct? Oh, with six months? Okay, all right. And then we're also going to include the item about maybe imposing additional conditions to manage the outdoor dining, right? That was part of it?
We are. That seems to be a very open book when expressed that way. But certainly, we would be concerned about safety and cleanliness and, you know, keeping it a nice place, certainly.
So we can agree to the eight items, sorry, Mr. Jung, or 10 items that the city outlined to look at? I mean, just so that they can get clear direction.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I had one final question to ask staff. If Director Fritzl or Director Post would be kind enough as to answer. With regards to Wilshire's closure, what, how many restaurants is that impacting? That it's closed, and how many restaurants are utilizing the closed portion of Wilshire right now?
Good evening. Five are using it regularly and six because of the one cafe, Green Bliss Cafe, comes out every once in a while. But five of them, pretty much all the time.
Thank you.
And with that, we still have a large agenda ahead of us. If there's no further comment, we could take it to a vote.
Okay, and this is the motion made by Mayor Whitaker, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem to extend for six months. And Councilmember Jung.
And that's including the bike lane being open, correct?
The provisions, yeah.
Yeah, okay, very good. Aye.
I'll add bike lane in there. Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Very good. And, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Actually, we've got, I think, about 16 items left, five pages of the agenda to go through still. It's 11 o'clock. We've got an early morning with, thank you, good evening. What can we, can we kind of poll things here? I mean, I want to see, do a poll of people in the public to see who's here for specific items?
I know you have people here for the veterans item.
Yeah, I would take a look to see which items normally fall under the consent calendar and put them under there and run those through. And then, but I would also like to maybe, before we do that, bring up item 14 regarding our veteran cemetery.
Yeah, I agree.
Because we do have a couple of veterans where they were here. Who, and then maybe, are all the items typically that are left on a consent calendar, do we know?
Well, I would, actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if we can, if we can bring the veteran cemetery next, perhaps? And then we can, perhaps, can we continue the water rates, rules, and regulations? Is that something that can be, is that time-sensitive?
That's the second reading of an ordinance.
That would have been on consent calendar.
Consent, yeah.
That would have been a consent item.
Why don't we just take the veteran cemetery first? And then we could just, you know, go through everything else in expedition manner? How does that? How does that sound?
All right.
All right, very good.
Yeah, let's do item number 14, which is a request for formal support of the Orange County Veteran Cemetery in Anaheim Hills and encourage federal, state and local governments to support this project. This to be presented by-
Yeah, in the interest of time, we, we can, we can skip that. This is, the county CEO has asked every city to consider approving this and so-
So if the council would rather hear from the public first before we discuss, if that works, we'll request public input on this?
I think this is the right time. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Nick Baradino. I am the president of Valor Veterans Alliance of, uh, Orange County. We now represent 156 veteran organizations and we have now had 20, uh, today, 22 city council resolutions in favor. This will be 23 if you pass it. It is, uh, I'm not going to take a, a lot of time on this. I mean, um, I've been coming to city council meetings since 1973, uh, for a long, long, long time.
And Board of Supervisors meetings long before that.
Yes, sir. And, uh, I just have to say this, I'm going to take my time to say you have selected one of the most, in all those years in government, on the opposite side of government. Some of you, we've had our times. You've selected honestly the most honest, um, hardworking and I think, uh, creative people that I ever met in government, uh, who I disagree with 80% of the time. Steve Danley, I mean, you really made a pick. This is, uh, I don't, I guess you're here interim or, you know, who knows, write another book or something. But the fact is, I just want to compliment you on that selection. I also want to please ask you to support, we've been fighting in Irvine for 10 years. And 10 years of civil war that they, that they moved us around like chess pieces. There were three pieces of property and we managed to get the city, uh, the city, uh, by initiative kicked us off of one, the city by ballot measure kicked us off of another and then, um, by virtue of a threat of a lawsuit, if they moved it to the other, uh, we decided it's time to pick up and fight on another hill. And it was, uh, about the best move we can make. The county has put up $20 million. We have $24 million in, in a trust account in, um, the state. So with all your help, um, we're going to be able to do it. But this has been, in my 48 years of representing employees here, which I, you know, don't, and going to city council meetings, um, this has been the most heartwarming thing I've ever seen. I've never seen our county come together bipartisan, people who hate each other on the political spectrum. This has never happened before. We have not yet received a single no vote from one single city council. And it, as a veteran and as a disabled veteran, um, as I can just tell you, um, this has been the greatest experience I've had. And this is one of the first times I don't mind waiting till 11 o'clock at a council meeting in 48 years to speak. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baradino.
Thank you.
Very much.
I do see one hand raised in Zoom.
Sure.
Uh, caller ending in 6192, you are unmuted. Caller ending 6192, you can go ahead and talk. 6192, looks like you're unmuted, go right ahead.
Good evening.
There, we can hear you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, hi, everyone. I'm very, very pleased to be listening and watching the meeting, um, in the comfort of my home. It's already 11:05, but I just want to support this cause and I want to support this, um, cemetery and the way that the gentleman presented and everything. So I think the city should be joined in helping out the veterans, um, cemetery. And I just wanted to highlight and thank you for, um, the flags, the Mexican flags that you guys are there in the, um, um, in the city. I really appreciate it and thank you so much, um, for our community. It's just an honor to have representatives putting and showing our Mexican heritage. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, sir.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Jung.
Uh, respecting Mr. Baradino's time and, uh, quite frankly, the veterans could have, uh, no stronger advocate. So I, I'd make a motion to move this item, sir.
I'll second.
And, uh, and I will, you'll second-
And moved and seconded, I just wanted to say we do poke fun at Irvine on occasion and perhaps their excuse is they're trying to encourage veterans to stay alive longer because they're not providing a resting place for them.
A lot of them. And then, Mr. Mayor?
All right, we'll, we'll call for the vote at that stage.
And before that, I'd just like to say that you mentioned the $24 million of the state and that was through the efforts of Assemblywoman Cork Silva who brought that money in and it's there. And hopefully we'll use it now before the state takes it back. But anyway, just had a plug in for the wife.
A roll call vote on the motion.
Got to go home tonight. Okay, are we ready for vote? Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Still no, no votes on this, so good luck to you.
Mr. Mayor, um, item four, you've got an attorney waiting for that item.
Yes, item number four, Fourth Amendment to Purchase and Sale Agreement for West Coyote Hills Neighborhoods One and Three.
Peter Howe from Lieutenant Teck will give a brief couple minutes.
Good evening. This is a fairly minor amendment to an agreement the city council previously approved for the purchase of property for open space in Parkland with grant funds. Uh, in just a quick, very quick background, in 2015, the city council approved a vesting tentative map for the development of West Coyote Hills property. That approval included conditions that gave the city the opportunity to purchase all or a portion of the property if funds could be raised for that purpose. Thereafter, um, the state awarded funds that could be used for that. And in December 2019, the city council approved a purchase and sale agreement to acquire portions of the property known as Neighborhoods One and Three with grant money provided, again, mainly by the state. Since that time, we've been working with the state funding agencies, including the State Coastal Conservancy and the Wildlife Conservation Board to resolve various issues related to, or various issues necessary for the release of those grant funds. It's taken longer than expected, um, partially due to COVID. Uh, but the amendment before you is necessary to slightly adjust the price to be consistent with an additional appraisal that was required by the funding agencies and was just recently completed. It also includes some other housekeeping changes. And finally, although the, the prior council action actually did recognize that it might be necessary to make non-substantive changes to the agreement, um, but staff determined it was be appropriate to bring this back to council just because it's been so long and there's new members on council. Just one final note in, in rereading the recommendation, uh, during the time I had, I think it would be helpful to provide that, you know, this city, at consenting manager has authority to, uh, execute any additional amendments that are insubstantial, that might be necessary, uh, potentially, you know, we're currently supposed to close in December 10. Um, you know, I know the Coastal Conservancy told me this afternoon they could commit to December 31, but maybe not December 10. So I think we'd be good to have a little bit of flexibility so we don't have to come back to you, uh, if it slips a little bit.
That would avoid some obstacles in the time allotted, so, yes, that sounds reasonable, I think.
Happy to answer any questions, otherwise I think it's pretty straightforward.
If the council has no ready questions, I'll ask for public input. And seeing none in the chamber?
None on Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yes, Mr. Silva, yes.
And so I think we've got it. We're ready for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, uh, Mr. City Attorney. You should wave a red flag when there's a meter running on an attorney in the audience here.
I should have.
So, Mr. Mayor, can we move the rest of the items as consent items unless anyone wants to pull one?
You know, I think what I'd want to do is ask if anyone here would have requested any of these to be pulled.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, in the, if, if I may, uh, continue the item number 17 till the next meeting, um-
Yeah, that's been done.
This was an item, that has been done already?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And item 10 was carried forward now.
Item 17, you want to continue by order of share? That's his public records request.
Ah, okay. I would-
So move the balance except six?
Yeah, I'd second that.
Moved and seconded.
Actually, isn't there one on here that, uh, actually, I will move the balance with the exception of six and I would like to register a no on, it was the item related to the, uh, League of Cities endorsement, you know, the, the, um-
Actually, on item 13, the conference resolutions, what, what-
It was the one pertaining to sales tax.
Correct. It wasn't a yes/no question. It was asking whether you wanted to provide direction on those. So you probably need a little more quick discussion on that.
Gotcha.
Based on the recommendation.
Okay. Well, then I guess we'll have to pull that one, sorry, I'm, I'm-
That, that is an urgent one, yes.
We'll pull six and then 13 and move the rest?
And continue 17.
Yes.
Okay, Silva, Dunlap.
Then ask for public comments on those items.
Right.
I see no hands raised. I don't believe we have any other public comment in the room except for item six. So we can pass the rest of those.
Then we'll bring it back to the council. We do have a motion and a second, uh, we're ready.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Uh, who, where am I? Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
And the flags are getting in my way. Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
So item number-
Six. Six, oh, sorry.
Yes. Item number six.
Fire truck.
Any, any comment by council? None? We could ask for a public comment? Okay.
I just kind of wanted to get more information on this one in particular. And, um, I know it's going towards replacing, um, a current fire engine. Um, I have questions on what exactly happened to, was it just a wear and tear issue? Was it an accident of some sort that we're replacing just because that's a large amount of money? And that's something that we can put towards, uh, better funding, something else like our public works. So, um, if we could just get more clarity on that.
Well, we have our very stalwart fire chief here to provide information.
Uh, yeah, so the, the, with the development agreement we worked out with, um, for the Goodman project, due to the, the height and what was going to, what's going to be occupying that building, uh, it does have requirements that would outstrip what is currently in our Station Three as far as the fire engine. Um, so the request of Goodman was to, uh, contribute to the purchase of a vehicle that can, that can handle that, that fire flow and that ladder height. Now, the vehicle that is currently set at Station Three is past due for replacement, uh, due, based upon NFPA, which are National Fire Protection Association standards of 15 years in frontline service and then it does move to a backup reserve status. Um, and so this rig has passed that time. So due to technology, the wear and tear, um, and the requirements for this area, the idea was that Goodman would put into, help offset half the cost of what that, that vehicle would cost and the replacement that was scheduled to happen for this other fire engine would pick up the balance of that. So we wouldn't be replacing in the future the same unit that is out of Station Three, but it would be this other type of fire apparatus in the very, in the very far future, 20 to 25 years.
So the-
For additional, uh, funding from the ready budget that's currently?
That, that funding has to be determined, so it hasn't been determined. So this is just earmarking that, those monies to be put towards that purchase.
So this mitigates due to the conditions created by the development, really, right? To put it in bureaucraties, anyway.
Correct.
Okay. And with that, we'll bring the item back to the council. I would, uh-
I'll move the item. I'll second.
Thanks. And we're ready for a roll call on this.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
And the last item is 13, the Cal Cities Resolutions and whether you want to, uh, provide direction, oops, time for me to shut up apparently, um, if you want to, um, provide direction to your voting delegate on how to vote on those conference resolutions and the bylaws.
Okay, and I believe the mayor, Pro Tem, brought up a concern?
Yeah, you know, the, I guess my concern, I'm just not a big proponent of item number one, the online sales tax equity. I understand there's been, uh, I think it was a Supreme Court, um, case that's allowed for states to determine how they handle that. Um, my, my personal view is that taxes are already too high. Uh, if you're buying something online, you know, the sales tax shouldn't be paid. I don't, I don't believe in the locate, you know, the location you're be, you're paying. It should be paid, if there's a tax paid location you're buying from, um, certainly that business, maintaining a business license is paying taxes in accordance with that. I don't believe there should be additional taxation on it. So I would be opposed to that item. Um, you know, perhaps we can either pull it, not issue a support letter or oppose, um, you know, or perhaps, you know, if we can't get to that, perhaps we can go neutral, but those are my views.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So this tax, that's already being, is it, is that already being taken and now we're just redirecting it from where the, uh, product is shipped from to where it's being delivered? Or is this an additional new tax? That's what I'm-
No, it's a new.
Yeah.
It's a new tax. Is that the case?
Yeah. So instead of Wisconsin getting it, Fullerton gets it. And we need all the tax, all the revenue we can get right now.
Let me see if that's letters in here, sorry. I don't, no, I don't, I don't, well, it should be in 13, let's see.
Uh, it looks like it is a, they are calling on the state legislature to pass legislation providing for a fair and equitable distribution of the Bradley Burns 1% local sales tax from in-state online purchases based on where the product shipped to and the impact and fairness of the location of the fulfillment centers on local jurisdictions.
So it is a reallocation of existing taxes?
Appears so. I'm not on this, uh, league policy committee, so I don't want to say I'm the expert on this, but-
That was my understanding.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
I failed to look into it.
This is, this is for the redistribution of what we currently pay. Uh, the distribution of the sales tax currently is based on square footage of business, um, and, and commercial space that each city has. Uh, but this is to allow for a different type of distribution based on the point of sale. So that way, uh, because, for example, um, if somebody buys, uh, something from Fullerton online, uh, we still get the same allocation of sales tax, uh, um, because, then let's say, uh, Brea, that because Brea has more square footage of commercial space than we do, even though the purchases are coming from Fullerton. Uh, so that, that's the, the, the general gist of it, as I understood.
Well, you know, my, my philosophy is pretty much when the council chooses someone as a delegate, that we do trust their best judgment and the best information that they obtain at the location. So I'm always reluctant to provide heavy direction to someone who we've appointed to represent the city personally.
Okay, well, I, and I stand corrected then on that. I appreciate the- Okay, well, and I stand corrected then on that. I appreciate the clarification there. So with that, the only advice I would have is enjoy Sacramento and just don't, don't bring back any higher taxes or more taxes or onerous regulation. I'll be a little more specific than the mayor.
And I hope the length of this meeting hasn't changed your flight plans either, but--
Hopefully not, sir.
With that--
You don't have to take any action or provide any direction to your delegate. If you prefer, you can just receive and file.
We decide not to provide direction. Okay. And with that, that has completed our agenda. Am I missing anything? What I'd like to do is just take a moment as we close the meeting is, this is an official city council action to certify that the Fullerton City Council adjourned its Tuesday, September 21st meeting in memory of Joan Miller Lasorda, who passed away September 20th of 2021. The council's action was taken in recognition of Mrs. Lasorda, beloved wife of Tommy Lasorda, an American professional baseball pitcher and Hall of Fame team manager with the Los Angeles Dodgers. Tommy and Joan were married on April 14, 1950. They met in 1949 at a Greenville Spinners minor league baseball game. The Lasordas are survived by daughter Laura and granddaughter Emily. They were preceded in death by son Tom Jr. The council's action was taken in recognition of Joan Miller Lasorda, a 58-year Fullerton resident, and her love for her family, many friends and community. Signed and sealed this 21st day of September 2021 on behalf of the council of the city of Fullerton. And with that, we are now adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting, October 5.